Member Rutledge, would you mind leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance? And members, please stay standing. Thank you, Member Rutledge. I'd like to ask Pastor Dickens from the DuPage AME Church in Lisle to come join us for invocation.
All right. Thank you. Let us pray. Oh gracious and holy God, we thank you for the opportunity to serve your people, to live out your command, to act justly, to love mercy, to walk humbly with you and with all people. Now God, we pray that as the county board convenes, that you would be in the midst of the work, that you would place your hands on the work, and that you would bring the work forward with success for all people. Bless those who are less fortunate and who are enduring hardship and struggle. We especially lift up victims of the hurricane and the tornado in Kentucky and Tennessee. God, now we pray that as you use us for your service, that you would get the glory. It's our prayer in Jesus' name, amen. We ask that you pause briefly for a moment of silence for those who are victimized by the tornado in Tennessee and Kentucky. Thank you, and God bless.
Thank you, Pastor Dickens. Next up, roll call, please.
Chaplain.
Here.
Chavez. Covert.
Here.
Desart. DeCiani. Eckoff. Garcia.
Here.
Hart. Krajewski. LaPlante. Ozog. Pachowski. Renahan. Rutledge.
Here.
Schworzy. Selman. Tornatori. MZ.
All right. Can we please have Henry Parker and Janelle Chadwick join us up here today? This morning, we're doing something a little different and definitely special. We're combining both a service anniversary and a retirement celebration on behalf of one of our DuPage Care Center employees. We're doing this because Henry Parker has served the residents of the care center for 40 years, and this month is his last as an employee and has a real pillar of the recreational services area in the center. Henry is steadfast, thoughtful, and he is dedicated to helping residents live their most active, engaged, and fulfilling lives as long as they can. So we have a proclamation in praise of Mr. Parker's extraordinary contribution to the DuPage Center after four decades of service. Whereas as part of the mission, the DuPage Care Center utilizes various therapies to enrich the lives of residents, assisting them to do as much as they can, as well as they can for as long as they can. And whereas Henry Parker joined the DuPage Care Center, then known as the DuPage Convalescent Center, in 1981 as a woodworking instructor as part of the center's recreational therapy program. And whereas throughout the years, Henry's responsibility grew, including direct care of residents and arranging field trips to concerts, basketball games, races, and among other activities. And whereas Henry founded the garden club for the care center residents, creating raised garden beds to allow residents of all abilities to grow hundreds of pounds of vegetables to donate to local homeless shelters. And whereas Henry has always recognized that residents' physical abilities represent only part of who they are, and he consistently strives to get to know, understand, and cherish the care center's residents' personalities, sense of humor, hope, spirituality, and aspirations. And whereas Henry has dedicated his career to improving the lives of care center residents and has been a valuable employee for DuPage County. And whereas Henry will retire from DuPage County on December 24th after more than 40 years enriching the lives of the residents of the DuPage Care Center, now therefore be it resolved that I, Ashley Selman, on behalf of Daniel J. Cronin, Chairman of the DuPage County Board, and members of the Board, do hereby thank Henry Parker for his dedication and service to the DuPage Care Center and wish him all the best on his retirement. Motion? Second? All in favor? Aye. Motion's approved. Thank you so much.
Thank you all. What an honor I have today to present Henry Parker here along with Susan Koblenz, his rec therapy manager, and Shawna Berman, our assistant administrator. And I'm going to let them say some wonderful things. I just want to say very quickly that when you work in long-term care, you often strive to think about what is your legacy? What is your impact? And Henry and his career is the epitome of a legacy, and we are very fortunate that DuPage County was able to benefit from him and his wonderful career.
I have been fortunate enough to supervise him for almost 20 years now. And what I know about Henry is he has a quick wit, a great sense of humor, and the residents love him for it. His compassion and kindness draw all residents to him. Not only does he take control of a 50-bed unit, but he is in charge of our men's group, our garden club, our wood shop, and he takes on many other responsibilities within the facility. The men's club, they used to love competitions, and he would create them. Whether it was a trivia competition with the ladies and the men, or volleyball competitions with other units, they just enjoyed them tremendously. With his wood shop, he was constantly coming up with great ideas for the wood shop to sell at the fall festival. And these could be like rubber band guns that the kids went crazy over. And it all went back to our rec fund, which was just, it benefited the residents greatly. Where the garden was concerned, that was his baby. He was involved in the garden for 35 years. And it started out very small. We probably had one, one and a half raised beds in the beginning. Now it's 10, and we have even makeshift garden beds on our center patio now because there's just so many residents involved. We have to cut it at 60 because there's just no room. And now we have the University of Illinois Master Gardener Program involved. We now have 60 master gardeners involved in the program. And they have to take turns because there's no room to have all of them involved in the program. So it's just beautiful because now we have master gardeners providing lessons and individual attention to our resident gardeners. It is the most wonderful program I have ever seen. Henry has actually done lessons at Life Service Network so that other facilities can learn about our program and emulate what we do. So it's just wonderful. Not only has he done so much for the garden, we've now got a new outdoor classroom that was constructed in 2015. He's designed and done the installation, or helped supervise the installation of a wheelchair-accessible cutting garden, a large terrace. We also have a butterfly garden, a sensory garden, a memorial garden for those residents that have passed. And he has also involved the residents in the Fourth of July floats. So they've ridden in and watched our floats go through the Wheaton Parades. And then the most neat thing that he's ever done is the Glen Allen Regatta. He actually put a cardboard boat in that competition for our 120th anniversary, and it was in the shape of a handicap bus. And we were in that competition, and the residents were able to watch that competition all because of him. So the guy is a true team player. He is a huge loss to my department. I will miss him greatly. Elizabeth will be holding a volunteer application somewhere on his last day, and hopefully he will be coming back as a volunteer. So he will be truly missed.
It's an honor to stand here in front of you today. It has been a great privilege to care for the residents at the care center. The Bible tells us that we are to love one another the way we want to be loved. And when we follow that commandment, residents stop being work and they become a gift from God. The wonderful community that exists at the center is due in large part to our administrative staff that I have seen over and over throughout the years always put the residents first. Any positive impact that I've had is in many ways due to my director you just heard, who has supported me all through all those different events. And without her, I would not have been able to do any of those things. So I thank her personally. And in the end, I am not a hero. Instead, I'm just part of a team that loves the individuals who call the care center their home. So thank you very much for this honor, and Merry Christmas to you all. Thank you.
That was a lovely way to start the meeting. Quickly, thank you, Connor, for the reminder. There's been a request to allow remote participation from Member Covert under Section 7A of the Open Meetings Act. Pursuant to Section 7A of the Open Meetings Act, if a quorum of members of the public body is physically present, as we have, as required by Section 2.01, a majority of the public body may allow a member to attend the meeting by other means if the member is prevented from physically doing so. So we have a motion. Do we have a second? Second, Member Garcia, all those in favor? Any objections? All right, Member Covert, welcome. Sorry for that. All right. Next up on our return to our agenda is our PACE Budget Presentation. If we can invite Tom Raciucci to come up to the podium. And we're going to start by recognizing another retirement. We'd like to wish PACE Executive Director Rocky Donahue a fond farewell as he is retiring after 38 years of service. We certainly want to wish Rocky all the best. And now we welcome our representative to the PACE Board of Directors, former Elmhurst Mayor Tom Raciucci to the podium. He is joined today by Chief Operations Officer and Executive, interim Executive Director Melinda Metzger. PACE is here for the Transit Services Annual Budget Presentation and to answer any questions. So please proceed. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much for the nice welcome. I appreciate it. Thank you very much for that recognition of Rocky Donahue. Rocky Donahue is retiring from PACE as the Executive Director. He has been with the organization over 40 years. He has never worked full-time anywhere else. He's a true public servant. He knows the organization inside and out. And by the way, he did a wonderful job for us, spending a lot of time in Springfield, advocating for public transit, particularly in the last five years when there was so much opportunity to garner some benefits for our region from the state, and much of that, by the way, coming through some federal monies that pass through the state. So on behalf of Rocky, I thank you for that. It's a very nice recognition, and we will deliver that certificate to him tomorrow. Tomorrow is his last PACE Board meeting that he'll be attending as the Executive Director. So thank you very much. You've already introduced Melinda. You did kind of jump her title because she's not the official interim director yet, but that looks like, appears to be the way we're going. Melinda's been with us many, many years and again knows public transportation in the Chicago Metropolitan Area inside and out. And Christine Rose is with me. She's always with me. I keep her at my elbow all the time when I'm talking transportation in DuPage County. She is the person on the ground. She is the go-to person. She's the first person that you reach out to when you need a question answered or some assistance, and she gets to me immediately. There were several cases in the last year, and it's kind of unusual, where she called me and said, you know, this question has come up, and we were able to get that call back from me within 12 hours. I mean, we work very, very closely, and she is your access point to me. She brought with her booklets, the budget booklet and pamphlet, which if you don't have those, she can give you one before the meeting is over, get one to you. We are printing a lot less of those than we used to in an attempt to be green and an attempt. Now, this is all available to not only you, but to your constituents online. You go to PACE and you can find our budget documents. And so it's a more efficient way of getting the information out there. On the budget, I held the DuPage County, as required by law, a public hearing in this building on October 21st. We had two attendees. So that's the kind of feedback for me. If I have 48 attendees or 58 attendees, I know we've got an issue and folks are animated about something. This time, it was only two. It was a person who was there to advocate for electric buses, which we've seen a lot if you happen, and I don't know if you do, but if you happen to watch PACE Board meetings online, we've had a lot of folks come out from advocating for electric buses. And by the way, PACE, and it's in the budget, has responded to those requests. So we had that gentleman. And then we had a visitor from the Metropolitan Mayor's Caucus who was just kind of there to make some general comments. And that was it. And that's fine, but we're there. If folks want to get to us, we're there. We hold those meetings as we are required to by law. To give you the big numbers, the budget this year is $272 million for suburban service. That's the big blue buses that you see on the street and the various dial-and-ride programs that are in addition to that. $225 million for ADA services this year. Now, both of those numbers are much larger than they've been in the past. That is because, one, through the CARES Act and other types of funding, there is resources that we've never had before and that we've never enjoyed before. And we have, within our budget document, you will see plans and how we're going to deploy these resources. I'll talk about them a little bit in a minute. I looked at the table myself here last year, and I said something. I want to make sure I had it right. PACE has been very, very proud of our ability to develop a budget and then hit those numbers. We've never made feel-good budgets. We never were overly optimistic. That just leads to trouble in the end, right? In my house, it is. We have a budget. We've got to stick to it. So we're very, very proud of that. Last year, I said that we don't know what's going to happen. We really didn't. We were in the middle of COVID. And that turned out to be forward-looking, right on target. The budget got completely wonky. Things were different. In society, in our culture, in our economy, everything was different. People who worked every day weren't going to work every day. People who went to the doctor every 90 days weren't going to the doctor every 90 days. People who shopped at the grocery store every week weren't going to the grocery store every week. So that affected not only our fixed routes, it also affected many of the dial-and-ride programs that we had in place. So the demand for those services shrunk dramatically. So the system shrunk dramatically. And then in the last six to nine months, some of that has come back. Maybe, I'm not a doctor. I don't know. Other people are smarter than me. No. Some people think we're rushing ahead of this. Some people think we need to do this. We need to get back to normal. But as the demand came back, our system did not come back as rapidly. We couldn't, and I know you've heard this before, we couldn't get drivers. So my really deeper dive into that is, we can't get drivers. We just can't. And that affects any business. If you operate your own business or your neighbor operates a business, ask them how they're doing getting help, and they're going to say the same thing. I can't get help. Now, why? That's for somebody else to figure out. But we cannot get the help that we need. So we can't get that. Worse than that, not worse than that, verbal eraser, different than that, is that the system is different inasmuch as we are not doing shared rides. So if we were, if the folks doing the scheduling would figure out that there were two people from Downers Grove who needed to go to the Oprick area, one for shopping and one for a doctor, they would share that ride. But because of COVID, we can't share that ride. So the demand, to the degree that the baseline demand has come back, the actual ride demand has come back even further, and yet we can't get the drivers. So that is, I know it's an overly simplistic answer, and I know you're going to say, gee, I heard that before, but it's the reality of the situation. And there are some things in our budget which are going to attempt to address all of that. While I'm on COVID, I have been asked to go very briefly, and I'll try to make this brief, what are we doing to keep people safe in our, on our buses and in our vehicles? You should know that the buses are deep cleaned and sanitized every day and multiple times throughout the day. There are hand sanitizers for the public to use on the bus. The driver of the bus is behind a plexed glass wall, and that's to protect him from the public and the public from him, right? Diseases transmit from one person to another. So that's a physical barrier that goes a long way to helping keeping everybody on that bus sick. Speaking of the driver, protecting people from the driver, we put on our website, and it's updated multiple times during the week, correct? Multiple times during the week, the number of employees we have. Because we thought a year ago, you would want to know, and the public would want to know, of the PACE employee base, do we have three people ill? Or 30 people ill or 90 people ill, or something? So all the individuals now, the division that they work in and the date that they got sick, all that information is transparent and out there and being provided. And we hope that gives the public some comfort as to what the risks are in riding a PACE bus, which, by the way, are extremely minimal. And to my knowledge, I've never heard of anybody claiming that they got COVID based on a PACE bus. So a lot of what we do is, this year and in our budget, is funds provided by the CARES Act. The federal government and the state of Illinois really stepped up to support transportation, particularly ADA transportation. I mention this every time I hear. I think it's important for the county board members to know that PACE took a big chance a number of years ago, and from my perspective, it was a chance, to take over ADA transportation within the boundaries of the city of Chicago. It's a huge part of our budget. And so if we look at, in the budget, right, as income and outgoing liability, that money has to be there. It must be there. If it's not there, we have to provide those rides. By law, we have to provide those ADA rides. So the money would come out of where? It would come out of the surface budget in DuPage County. So we really leaned on the state legislators at the time with the help of folks like you and our state legislators down in Springfield, said if we're going to do this, we need this service to be 100% funded. And now, really about a decade later, it has been 100% funded. So that's a two-sided statement. One, thank you to the state legislator and the RTA, et cetera, for fulfilling that promise and that what I consider to be an obligation on their part. And two, to remind you folks that this is an ongoing issue. Folks make, you may see this in government once in a while. Folks make promises. I will be there for you. I will take care of this. I promise you. And then they retire. That happens. They're gone. And a new guy comes in, and a lady comes in, and it's like, oh gee, I didn't know. It's not in my docket. I'm not going to worry about that. So directly from CARES Act, we have at least $15 million coming to provide new and restored service. $7 million of this is going to go into supporting our fixed route system. Remember, the bus is still running, but the folks aren't getting on, so the money isn't there. So it's going to fulfill that. $5 million for various regional transportation network companies, Uber and Lyft. We're just really starting to get into the Uber and Lyft thing. Someone asked me in this room about four years ago, what are we doing about Lyft? And my answer, quite frankly, was inadequate. It was, gee, I don't know. I don't know how that's going to work. I still don't know how it's going to work. But we are engaged with them on a regular basis, and we're going to figure this out. But it's hard to replace a $3 ride with a $9 ride or a $14 ride. So we're working with them, and it's going to, you're going to be seeing it show up more and more in our system. $3 million is being proposed to give a 15% increase to the current dial-and-ride partners that we have. It's just, you're getting a raise. You're getting a 15% raise. What are they going to do with it? We hope they use it to deploy more vehicles, maybe to recruit more drivers, maybe to pay the drivers more so that they will come back. A lot of these drivers would just, in fear of the COVID disease, and it's, you know what? I'm only, whatever, I'm only 57 or I'm only 62, but I'm going to retire now. I'm not going to put myself in that vehicle with six or eight or 10 different strangers every day. Those people have gone away, and that's part of this problem with the manpower. We can't get people to come back. Nope, I'm retired. I'm done with that. And $1 million for various TNC pilot programs and ADA transportation within the suburbs. There's also a $200,000 grant to each county, and DuPage County will be getting that grant as well. And these will come into the county, and it's going to be up to you guys to figure out how you want to deploy those particular, $200,000. What did I say? Did I say $200,000? Did I? Did I say it right? Okay. That might be in support of various township programs that might take precedent over one, over another, not my area, but we'll support you in making those decisions if you need it. If you need data or information, that's what we're there for. We'll be there to help work that out. Our capital plan this year includes a $10 million electric bus pilot for our North Division. Now, that, again, back to that fellow that came to our hearing and have come to our PACE Board meetings for the last three months or so. We have looked at our system, and we have found that we can deploy electric buses to address some of the ride demand in the North Division. It's a smaller division. The rides tend to be shorter, and the garage is smaller, so the ability to retrofit it to handle electric buses is easier, and that's what we're going to do. We anticipate that we will spend $15 million on electric buses over the next five years. So that budget, I line item that you see in this year's budget, we anticipate will go on. It is our intent, and we have voted as a board, to be all electric by 2040. Now, to be perfectly honest, or to tell you the whole story, there are folks who are not happy with that. We should be doing it faster. But I don't know about you, but in my business, I always wanted to be on the leading edge, but not the bleeding edge. And when we started delving into what does electric buses mean, how do you operate them? How far do they go? Do they work in the winter, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera? There's hundreds of questions out there. And yes, I know that there are some systems, we've been told that there are some systems in suburban Seattle or some such place, where they're all electric already. Well, yeah, but they're operating a system that's about 1% the size of ours. So there's a learning curve there. We're making ourselves aware of all those facts, all that learning curve information that we can, and we intend to get caught up. But our policy now is that by 2040, we will be in a zero-emission fleet, one way or another, and that really means electric. That leads to the largest infrastructure expansion in PACE history. We got that new garage to do that we're working on right now. Our current garages will need to be retrofitted over the next 20 years to handle electric. We don't really have a handle on what that cost is going to be, but it's going to be in the tens and tens and tens of millions of dollars to get that done. We are building out a new plainfield garage. This is specifically to support the Bus on Shoulder program on I-55, which has been tremendously successful. And that bus, that garage will also have the capability of having some standard street level buses in it, and some of those will serve the DuPage County area. We're also doing, retrofitting the wheeling garage. This is how fast the technology moves. We bought a piece of property about two-plus years ago. We spent two years supporting the infrastructure in the area, and that includes the streets around this facility, all right? And now we're just getting into the facility to convert it over to compressed national gas, CNG. Okay, that's great. But now it looks like that technology is going to be outmoded before that infrastructure, before those capital costs are amortized. So again, this is why we have to go slow and make sure we don't make any obvious mistakes in terms of deploying capital. Within the capital budget, I always give you the vehicle count. We're going to be purchasing 51 new CNG buses. No, no diesel anymore at PACE. We're not purchasing any more diesel buses. By the way, a bus, once you buy it, according to use federal money to buy that bus, it's got, you cannot decommission that bus until 12, until it's 12 years old or older. So this gives you a sense of the timeline that involves rolling out these budgets. Six fixed route electrical buses and the charging infrastructure, again, back at the North Division. 59 fresh paratransit vehicles. Working with staff last week, I asked them, what is the average age of a paratransit vehicle? Because if I'm getting a ride, I don't want to get in some rambling wreck, right? I want to get in a nice, safe park, smooth, et cetera, et cetera. Turns out, it's just a little bit over five years. And I would encourage you to call your local mayor and ask them how old their And I would encourage you to call your local mayor and ask them, "How old are, what, what's the age of their average police car?" It turns out to be about five years. So we're return, replacing those vehicles pretty much right on schedule. I also, by the way, parenthetically, the average age of the three cars in my house are 5.7 years. So, uh, just as an, as an aside. DuPage specific issues, DuPage County Human Services Department will be receiving a $200,000 grant, again, to be deployed by you all to where you see the need. You're on the ground. I'm not. Pace is not. So, uh, we'll see. We expect that that'll go to support various dollar ride programs, ADA, TAP, et cetera. And, uh, I think I already mentioned this, the DuPage Dollar Ride Partners are going to be receiving 15% more from Pace. Again, this is this raise. Unfortunately, the rule, the, the reality of the world is, when the funds are there, people will find uses for it, and it'll enhance and, and, and support the program, uh, generally. And we are looking at new pilot demonstration programs here in DuPage, hopefully in 2020, to provide better and deeper ADA and ride DuPage customers alternate services. What that translates into is, we haven't really, we're not there yet, but as I said earlier, we really are engaged with Uber as to how to make this happen. An example of this, Dan Cronin once asked me, "Why did you cut so many routes in DuPage County? It seems like you cut more routes in DuPage County than anywhere else." And the answer was, "Well, we did." But the vast majority of those routes that were cut were feeder routes to Metro. So if the Metro train isn't running, we can't have the route running, right? So that just, that just makes sense. Also, now, the Metro system has mostly returned, if you look at their schedule, but that doesn't mean people are on the train. When people are not on the train, then people are not consuming the available parking. And it turns out that that is what drives the need for a Metro, for a Pace bus to get people to Metro, is the lack of parking, which is a variable in every different metro station, every different town. The other day, I went by one of the structures in downtown Elmhurst, and in the middle of the day, that structure had 246 spaces available. So people are not going to be taking a, a, a two-way trip on the feeder route that costs them money when, when they can go pay one parking fee, which is also subsidized by Metro. They can pay one parking fee. So the demand for those Metro, for those feeder routes has really gone away. We don't, and the point of all this is that we don't see that coming back. And we're looking at how we can address that with various Uber, flight, et cetera, onesie types trips, maybe paired up trips, et cetera, and how people will call for them, including folks who are using it. ADA, by the way, is different than all this other stuff. The rules and regulations for ADA are a separate entity. One of the things that folks have asked us is, "Well, can't we provide some ADA rides on Uber?" Well, yes, we can. We'll figure that out. Oh, well, wait a minute. The folks, my grandfather couldn't, he doesn't have a cell phone, and he doesn't begin to know how to use an app, okay? But, okay, but it turns out that if we engage Uber in such a way, they can provide with us a phone number where people can call Uber on the phone. This isn't the way Uber's supposed to work, right? But for, in special cases, you can call Uber on the phone and say, "I'm Tom Markucci. I'm at this address. I need a ride tomorrow morning to my doctor's office." And they'll put it in their system, just as if you did it on your phone. So these are all the kinds of things we're working through on every day to get our, to get the demand in DuPage County for these individual rides satiated as quickly as we can. So I have other stats here on my, in my, in my folder, which I could, uh, continue, but I was told two years ago I went on for 28 minutes, and that was too long. So I think I'll stop it there, and thank you very much, and I always am available for questions.
Any questions from the board today? Oh, sorry, Member Covert, please go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, no, that was a wonderful presentation, and I just want to thank you for taking out your time, uh, to come to our board meeting and explain the realities of certain things. Um, so that was very helpful, and I learned a lot today. So thank you so much for coming in.
Well, thank you. Thank you very much.
Go, Member Chavez, and then Member DeCiani, please.
Thank you. Hi. Thank you so much for the presentation and the overview. We've gotten some feedback from our township supervisors that there's been some service issues, and I was wondering if you could address some of those concerns. One of them is that riders are being, especially on those one-off situations like you're mentioning, are being left at certain, um, locations, like a hospital or a doctor's appointment. I, as the Chair of Economic Development, can appreciate that you guys are having a really hard time keeping drivers, getting drivers. So I appreciate that that's just a nationwide problem, like you mentioned. But what are you all doing to kind of address those issues? I know we had another issue where people weren't able to get to work and then lost their jobs. So I just want to make sure that we're not having a ripple effect across our community because people are having transportation issues. So would you be able to address that a little?
Well, I, that's a great, great question. Full honesty, we are having a ripple effect, and we're doing everything we can to stop it and to stop it in its tracks. I, a missed ride, a late ride, you know, this happens. The system isn't perfect. Abandon people who do not get a ride back from the Jewel Food Store or from their doctor's office is totally unacceptable. And that is my, not only my opinion, it's the opinion of staff. So we need, we need that feedback. Now, I have not heard, to this day, I have not heard of any specific person being left without a ride home. That does not mean it doesn't happen. So what I'm encouraging you all to do is, when that does happen, when you get that kind of feedback, that Mrs. So-and-so, Mr. Markucci, got left at the, at his doctor's office and couldn't get home, we need to hear that, and the sooner the better, so that we can follow up. What happened? Because those are, those are investigations that need to take place, and the sooner we can do them after the fact, the better. So we would encourage you to, to do that. As far as losing the jobs go, that really shouldn't happen. I, I would say to, well, I would advocate for that employer myself. I would go into that employer and say, "Now, I understand you have a business to run here, and people have to be on your shop floor. In my business, we have a shop floor, and this job goes to this person, to this person. So you can't have gaps. People have to be there." So we understand that. But firing people for missing, uh, their start time three times, uh, to me is a little bit much. And I'm saying this, there's a television right there, and I'm saying this so that people who operate businesses in our county and in our community can understand that. That's not to wash my hands of it and say, "It's not my problem." It's not what I'm saying. It is our problem. It is our issue to fix. But we will advocate for folks who, who need it, and I'm there. And I'd be, I would almost enjoy that conversation, actually, to go out and do that, so.
All right. Thank you. Well, I appreciate that that's on your radar. I think the other piece of, of information that I've gotten from townships is accounting issues. So I would put that on your radar as well, that it seems like there may be some delays in billing that can be like three to four months out, and it makes it difficult for them to make payments. Sometimes in that process, then they're overpaying Pace and then having to ask for refunds. So I would also ask that you look at maybe tightening that up. Again, I know we're in a labor shortage, so I know that there are certain forces at work in every department, but I feel like it's my obligation as their representative to be their voice.
I, I, I'm not in the room, but I am listening to what goes on in those meetings, and I heard about this issue about billing. I asked Melinda Metzger about it last week. She assured me that they are, it's on their radar, as you said, and that they intend to have it cleaned up, that the standard should be two months, 60 days. Again, just like I was talking about the other issue. If you're dealing with this stuff four, and five, and six months after the fact, did that ride actually get delivered?
Right.
Who was the driver? Uh, how, what was the distance? Those records get lost, misplaced, misunderstood, et cetera, et cetera. So that's really, uh, you, you're right. That, that should be handled in a timely fashion. And of course, we close the books every month, and so then you're in the next month doing the work, and then it should get paid. So thank you for that.
Thank you.
Member DeCiani?
Yes, uh, thank you, Mayor, for your presentation. I had given you a heads up about some of the challenges that have been out with, you know, a lot of our townships have kind of gone to the wayside of doing their local transportation of seniors.
Yes.
And people with disabilities.
Yes.
Opting for, uh, participating in the Ride DuPage program, which is operated by Pace and DuPage County.
Right.
To, to the credit of some of the townships, they were a lot more accommodated. They were going to people's houses and the system coming out. Some of those folks might be blind or might be physically challenged and, and needed that extra help. Uh, one of the challenges we're hearing from the townships now is too, is that, that, that hand, that handoff is not, is, is friendly because of the, of the challenge with, um, with Ride DuPage not going into the building itself and helping accommodate that, that individual. So I'm wondering if there's any solutions. I know that the line of sight issue is important, where the bus driver needs to be able to, you know, keep an eye on the bus. Um, but also, uh, we, you know, whether it's putting an aide on the bus, uh, or, or positioning that bus so he can have a line of sight, get to the front of that nursing home and, and escort that individual who might be blind or challenged to, to the vehicle. But, uh, you know, we, we often see this with our school buses with handicapped kids. They'll actually go to the door and, and assist. Um, so we're hoping that we can overcome some of these challenges, because let's face it, people that are.
Right.
Using the paratransit are, are challenged, so.
Absolutely. Um, Member DeCiani is repeating a conversation that he and I have had several times over the last month. Um, so I would encourage any of you to call me if you have a question, as, as, I want to call the mayor the mayor, because in my view, mayor is a pretty high-level job to have. Um, great question. Here is my advice to everybody, is, um, no, that, that driver needs to stay in line of sight of that vehicle. He cannot go into a building and abandon his vehicle. That's just contractually, and that's insurance, and that's the way it is. With carjackings going on now, you, you, you open up the driver's door, and you pop the hood of the trunk, you're at the back of the trunk, and your car gets hijacked. Even here in DuPage County, that can happen. So they have to stay in, in, in view of the, of the car. Having said that, the two easiest solutions are, A, they can bring, uh, an aide. Particularly ADA ride, we do not charge for the second person. So that person sometimes is a family member, sometimes it's a paid aide that's in the house in the first place, uh, sometimes it can be a neighbor, but if, if they need help in that vehicle, they can get help in that vehicle. Now, notice I said "in that vehicle," not "getting to that vehicle." You can call, when you call for that ride, you can ask for a door-to-door ride, which I think is part of the issue. People don't know that. If they ask for a door-to-door ride, then the driver knows that before or when he gets dispatched. So he has that information. So he knows it's going to take a little extra time, and that it, that he is expected to get out of that vehicle and go to that door. Maybe it's an apartment building, and he meets somebody at the door, and by the way, to your point, he can then park the, the vehicle where he can see it. If he's got to go into a courtyard in an apartment complex and keep his eye on his vehicle, but go to, go to that door, not into the building, not up to the second floor, but to the door. And that is on both ends of that trip, coming and going. And, uh, and that includes, and I'm pretty sure I'm going to look at Melinda, that I want to get a nod of a yes here, that if it's a trip to, let's say, um, like the Elmhurst Clinic, that, that, they'll pull up there, and again, get them to the door of that building, right? Right. So it's a good point, um, and, uh, and, and that's what, what our quote, approach to that situation is. We understand that if you're, if you are, like my father was towards the end of his life, unable to walk unassisted, well, then it doesn't matter if the ride is called or not, you know? If you can't get to the car, you can't get to the car. So you can request a door-to-door system. But please do that when you call for the ride. Then it gets into the system, so. All right?
Great. Any other questions today? All right. Thank you so much for your presentation.
Well, thank you very much. Um, my only feedback was, I heard somebody say, "Thank you for coming out, and thank you for your time. I work for you. I'm supposed to be here. I'm paid. I'm, I'll always be here. Let me know what I can do to help, okay?"
All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right. Bye-bye.
All right. Next up, we have our HOPE Task Force presentation. Someone will invite Member Hart and Member Schorzy to join us up at the podium, and then Karen Iala is here as well. Um, Member Hart serves as the co-chair of the HOPE Task Force and is here with DuPage County Health Exec, Health Department Executive Director Karen Iala to summarize their work for 2021 and to look forward to 2022.
Good morning, everyone, and thank you, Chair Solomon, for the introduction. Today, more than any other point in our history, there will be an empty seat at a table during the holidays because of someone who passed away due to substance use disorder. And all of us in this room, I'm sure, our one degree of separation from someone we personally know has passed away from that terrible disease and affliction. And even though our numbers in DuPage County are better than the state and national averages for the increase in opioid overdoses, we still have a lot of work to do. And that's why I'm so honored to be standing alongside my colleagues here behind me, who every day and every week are putting all they can into the management of the HOPE Task Force, where we continue to invest in innovative programs that will hopefully stem the tide of this terrible epidemic. So today, what we're going to do is walk through a little bit of the information that gives some background on the programs we invested in to date, and of course, we'll be willing and able to take your questions. So if we don't mind going to the next slide? Just for anyone who's not aware, or anyone who's new, the HOPE Task Force is a joint operation of the County Board and the Board of Health. And really, what our job is, is to advise policymaking bodies, both this board and the Board of Health, on how we can better address the opioid epidemic and ultimately save lives. Um, there's a number of different ways we do that. One of the most important ways we do it beyond our regular meetings is investing in innovative programs that act in supplement, not in replacement, of all the typical work that we do to combat substance use disorder. So we're trying to find programs that have not gotten funding, um, and that have shown quite a bit of promise, give them the seed money that they need to get up and running, and then hopefully have them be sustainable moving forward. And luckily, we've had a number of projects that have actually won national recognition for this effort. We'll go to the next slide? Next slide? Our framework for success. This is really our guiding principles and what drives us, not only in terms of what programs we invest in, but in terms of the activities that we undertake at the HOPE Task Force. Uh, there's five key components of our success. First is reducing access to drugs. Second is reducing opioid use and misuse, and this is sort of morphing into broader substance use disorder, uh, use and misuse. Increase overdose responses, that's the Narcan program that we're all familiar with. Intervention, treatment, and recovery, which is a critical issue that we're grappling with. And then lastly, substance use prevention and education, which I know is a topic that I'm going to give to Member Schorzy's heart. Uh, next slide, please. I do want to make note of my co-chair, Dr. Lanny Wilson, who all of us know and, and love. He wishes he could be here today. He had a, a prior conflict, but he sends his best. And as you can tell by our membership, we have quite a, a, a good list of active members in the Task Force, ranging from our state's attorney to individual community members, and we're confident that it really reflects all of the different stakeholders that play a role in this, ranging from health systems to paramedics to pharma, to, uh, our law enforcement and, and public health departments. And with that, I will turn it over to Karen Iala.
Thanks so much, Greg, and I appreciate this opportunity to speak with you, although this is one of those task force and initiatives that's really driven by the incredible work of the team we have over at the DuPage County Health Department. So I would like to acknowledge and thank Mila Sagalas and Chris Hoff, who also oversee and really staff the work of this task force. You'll see on the left of this slide that the, certainly the pandemic of drug overdose has also not subsided. We continue to increase. And then on the right side of this slide, you'll see that not only are the number of this slide, you'll see that not only are the number of overdoses increasing, but they're getting more complex. So whereas we used to see heroin only, or fentanyl only, we're seeing a real cocktail as we move across the years. One of the things that I wanted to do is very quickly talk about the investment of funding that we receive from the County Board. We view this investment, as Greg said, as initial support for innovative and creative strategies. These are not simply programs that are one and done, but rather system of care and capacity investments that continue to grow and expand beyond the initial funding. So we'll start with the most recent and then work our way backwards. Again, the most, the we will be hearing from our 2021 grant recipients who just received notice of their funding over the course of 2021. Of course, they had the same kind of challenges that all of us did. But they're going to be doing a full report of the way that they have invested those funds at our January 28, 22, 2022 meeting that you all are invited to. So we'll start with Advocates Program. Advocate had a program called PERSIST, which really helps link at the point of care individuals who are willing to access recovery services. And over the course of time, I know we've talked, I remember talking with you about how important it is that that window of opportunity for somebody to join recovery from addiction is really, really quick. And so we need to make sure that we have services available during that time. They have developed a program at Advocate and have been able to expand their hours and services. Haymarket Center is working with the DuPage County Correctional Center with treatment and recovery supports, including counseling, transportation, and other very tangible, very real needs that people who are early in recovery as they transition out of the correctional facility may need. We also have Hope for Healing. Hope for Healing has merged two groups, Live for Lolly and the St. Andrews Church in West Chicago, to provide harm reduction services. They provide outreach and support on Saturdays during their food distribution, and have already served over 100 individuals. And finally, with the 2021 investment, NAMI DuPage has launched a support group, a peer-led support group, two times a month that meets on the first and third Tuesday for duly diagnosed individuals with both substance use and mental health disorders. I'm not going to go through each and every one of these. If you would like to see background, if you'd go to our hopedupage.org website and check out the minutes from July 23, 2021. That is the date that we went into quite a bit of background on each of these. But I want to point out a couple of them. Because again, these represent from 2018, programs that the County Board has invested in that continue today and have, in some cases, even expanded. So in 2020, the DuPage County Adult Probation was provided, an investment of $25,000. They met their goal of 40 probationers under Tim McGavin's leadership. They formed a partnership with Path to Recovery, and 13 of those 40 probationers were engaged with recovery coaches. In 2019, DuPage Health Coalition was awarded an investment of $50,000. They provided a countywide training and increased the capacity of healthcare providers to, with an additional 50, who are trained in medication-assisted recovery services that now are continually provided across the county. Access Community Healthcare Network was one of those who participated in that training and increased the accessibility for individuals to engage with medication-assisted recovery. They've also hired and now are supporting on their own staff to provide those services to the community. And back in 2018, with the original and inaugural funding, the award-winning and nationally recognized program of then Chief Judge Guerin, the focus court, provided 220 people involved through that court effort, with an 86% successful completion rate. And they recorded a recidivism rate of 14%, which is contrasted with the typical recidivism rate of 25 to 30%. Each of these programs listed, again, continue. And now we're looking and extraordinarily grateful for your support for $200,000 of investment in this upcoming year. The first round of funding will be announced in February. The application process will be consistent with previous rounds. There will be a multidisciplinary review team made up of HOPE Task Force members. And again, the focus is on this innovative projects that have seed money and have a commitment to extend beyond the scope of this initial funding and investment. Once more, I would invite any of you to participate in the HOPE Task Force meeting. It will be held on Friday, January 28. Typically begins at 9:00 AM, I believe, and will be hosted at the Kurzweil Community Center across the street. So with that, questions?
Questions? Member DeSeyna?
Thank you for your presentation. It was quite in-depth. I'm wondering, number one, could you send us that presentation, please, by email?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. I kind of have a presentation that I want to make on January 28. So is that still a three-minute public comment period?
Yes.
Okay, thank you so much.
Members A?
Thank you. Thank you, Karen. You know, I see a lot of good work's been done. But I'm kind of surprised over the last year or two, we've had millions and millions of dollars in CARES Act and ARPA money. This group hasn't asked for anything above and beyond. But, you know, I'm thinking this became a huge problem because of COVID, right? We know the numbers were there, and they've gone up. Could you use more money? I mean, would somebody advocate and say, hey, you know, I know we got an extra $100,000 this year, but we really could use another $200,000 because this issue is not going away, and we need that. I mean, we see the people who've gotten it over the years, but I'm sure those programs are continuing that we could help more people. I mean, that's what we want to do at this point.
Right, right. Absolutely. I'll start, and then Member Hart can jump in. It's not as simple as more money, right? We heard from Pace that they need bus drivers. The capacity for substance use treatment providers and recovery individuals is very, very limited. You can't find individuals willing to work in that area or trained in that area. So we very much need that. Are there opportunities for us to invest additional dollars? You bet there are, and we will absolutely be coming with some of those ideas.
Please, thank you.
And just to add to that, you know, we did ask for more money this cycle, got $200,000 versus the one, which we're very thankful for. But I go back to what I said at the beginning of the presentation, which is that we're doing our task force work in supplement to other expenditures that are being made throughout the county. Technically, the county right now, even before the CARES Act and ARPA, we were investing, I think, north of $3.5 million into substance use disorder treatment, recovery, and solutions. That's, you know, the Narcan program, different services that the Health Department offers, and that's outside of what our task force is doing. So I don't want the group to think that only $200,000 or $100,000 is going towards combating this issue. It's actually substantially more. This is just what we need to invest in DuPage-based seed programs.
All right. Member Echov?
Thank you for all your hard work and for your presentation. Lots of times, the questions I ask you are questions that I get out in the field, and I don't know the answer to. So you're the unfortunate recipient of my emails and questions. One of them is that COVID-19 has caused an increased rate of deaths by drug use in opioids and heroin and that, and also that suicides have gone up. And I was wondering if there's any way, on the charts that you send out to us weekly, that we could sort of track that? Because back in September, I said to you that I thought the COVID that we're in is a 2 compared to a 10 back in November, December. And I looked at your charts again for deaths in November and December last year were the worst 2. And we're, it seemed like we're flattening out in the last four months. So I'm wondering if we could track the suicides and the opioids, because the people make the argument to me that all the mandates and things like that are increasing the number, the isolation, the things like that are increasing the suicides, increasing the drug use, increasing the deaths. And those deaths are just as important as any COVID death. But I can't track it on your charts that you have now.
Yes, we absolutely can provide that information. I would really caution us from coming up with a single cause for a very complex issue, right? So other things that have happened over the last year are, isolation is absolutely one of those things that does not work in favor of recovery, without a doubt. Also is the fact that we began allowing for alcohol to be delivered through the internet. So we've seen alcohol sales just skyrocket. We've seen the legalization of marijuana, and we've seen record tax revenues associated with that. We've seen many things happen within our society that may contribute or have some sort of tangential impact on these very unfortunate outcomes. And so I want to, did the stay-at-home and the lockdowns have something to do with it? Absolutely. But so did a whole host of other issues.
And on a totally unrelated subject, I just wanted to let you know that last week, I ran into Bill Babiar, and he wanted me to pass on to you and to Chris and to Dennis and your whole staff that he always thought you guys did such a great job, and he always appreciated working with you. So I just wanted to let you know that.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions for Karen or the rest of the team here? All right. Thank you so much, everyone.
I did also have an update on COVID.
Yes, please.
Okay. So today marks the one-year anniversary of the first COVID-19 vaccine being administered in the United States. Today also marks the 692nd consecutive day that the DuPage County Health Department has been in formal incident command to respond to the COVID pandemic. And we are still learning and receiving another chapter of education on that virus that I'd like to share with you today. Now, before I get started, I want to provide three key takeaways. So if the rest of this is all a blur and your eyes glaze over, please, please, stay focused on these three issues. Vaccinations and booster shots are safe, effective, and by far the most important tool in reducing hospitalizations and unnecessary deaths from COVID. That's number one. Number two, consistently used, well-fitting face coverings and masks are also effective tools in reducing viral spread. And number three, healthcare resources are a limited commodity, and we all can play a significant role in preserving that commodity and doing our part. So what's changed? Did you have my other presentation? So what's changed since the last time I was here? And of course, that was November 24, when we, in the public health world, identified Omicron as the next variant. Right now, although we're hearing a lot about Omicron, over 99% of virus samples that are genetically sequenced in the U.S. show that they are the Delta variant right now. However, we have heard from CDC, in fact, on a call yesterday, that there are now 30 states plus the District of Columbia who have sequenced samples that have identified Omicron. Interestingly, there are, have been, and very welcome, there have been zero deaths in the United States that have been tracked to Omicron, and one death was reported in the UK yesterday. We have the tools to fight Omicron. Vaccines have been found to be effective with Delta, and we have reason to believe and seen data that Omicron is the same. Vaccines are highly effective in reducing severe outcomes. Again, masks, particularly masks that fit tightly and are worn consistently, particularly in more high-risk settings, are effective in reducing the spread. I would like very much to separate the two issues of whether or not masks are effective with whether or not we support mask mandates. Masks are effective. Mic drop, right? So I'll leave that with you one more time. And increasingly, with very mild or asymptomatic cases, many times being in breakthrough cases, we're encouraging testing before participating in large group settings. Last week, and in the file, the PowerPoint slides, you will have a link to this, but last week, CDC reviewed and updated their science brief on the effectiveness of community use of masks to control the spread. Again, the outcomes are very, very clear. This next slide, which is fascinating, I'm just kidding. We're just going to keep going, because then you'll put the pictures together later. You'll see that our seven-day rolling average of new cases is now up close to 500. We're at 484 new cases reported per day. And in fact, based upon the last couple of days of over 500 and nearly 600 cases, I anticipate that we will continue to see that rise. Now, 2/3 of the outbreaks that we've identified, and that's two, three more cases that are epidemiologically linked, that we've identified in the past two weeks have been in schools, daycares, or preschools. But cases across our community are driven in all of the age categories, with the 0- to 59-year-old leading, it's 0- to 19, 20- to 39, and 40- to 59, all are very much neck and neck with the number of cases and a dramatic increase. However, we have increasingly focused our efforts in public health on hospitalizations versus cases as a metric to assess our community's health. We see right now, and there's a headline taken from the media this last week, that Illinois and four other states, five other states, account for more than half of the country's recent COVID-19 hospitalizations. Sharing with us are Michigan, Ohio, Indiana, Pennsylvania, and New York. Now, if this headline, if we had, and there probably was a headline two months ago, it would have been Georgia, Louisiana, Florida, that area of the country. So again, it's, rather than doing something wrong, it's an element of the wave of the way this virus is spreading. When we look at hospital admissions, which you will see in the presentation, hospital admissions on the graph that we share, there's a steep decline when you get to the end of the graph. And it looks like, wow, the last seven days have been phenomenal. Well, that's only a result of incomplete data, right? So if you want to, if you want to share this information with others, please make sure you go back at least 10 days, because it takes a while, particularly, and I'm getting to that, particularly with hospitals as full as they are right now, to report that data to us. A more real-time update is the one that we get on a daily basis from the hospitals themselves. And what that shows is that we are over now 200 individuals in the hospitals in DuPage County. We are on a call with hospital leaders this morning. They're identifying that they're seeing a doubling and a quadrupling, a doubling over the last two weeks, a quadrupling over the last four weeks in their hospital admissions. So we have concerns. In spite of the level of vaccine and treatment availability and uptake, we are increasingly seeing the numbers of hospitalized and ICU-treated individuals increase. And the numbers, in fact, are pretty consistent, if you look across this graph, with the numbers that we saw earlier this year. And you think, why is that? We have nearly 80% of our population vaccinated. We, you know, we have treatment in place. Why is that? Well, there's two very likely reasons for that. One is that we now have the Delta variant that is circulating, which is extraordinarily transmissible and virulent. And then also, I'd like to remind you, and I know we all kind of like to forget the days a year ago, but many of the prevention strategies that we had in place, whether that be shelter in place, or masking, social distancing, we didn't have high school football games. We didn't have even professional sports leagues that traveled across the country. They stayed very, very isolated. They stayed very, very isolated. Anytime, anytime there is an opportunity to be, for the virus to spread, it will take that opportunity. We're seeing deaths continue again. And again, it is not at the high levels. And remember, Akoff, you're right on with that fact. It is not at the high levels that we have seen before. However, we continue to be persistent over the last six to eight weeks. And in the news this week, we hear that one of every 100 older Americans, which unbelievably is identified as or defined as people 65 years and above, which used to be so much older than it is now, have died from COVID-19. One in every 100 residents. We also included in the slide deck, a comparison, because we've often heard that, or several of you have asked when I've presented before, well, why are we doing more poorly than Florida's doing in spite of the fact that we have mask mandates and some of the other things? And so there is a tool that's through the Financial Times that allows you to track over time deaths and cases, and you can compare states, you can compare countries. And what we find is that it is very misleading. Again, like we talked about with the heroin overdoses, and one cause is the main cause. Very hard to say at one point in time that the difference between our state and another state is because of only the mandates or some of the issues that are going on in the policies of the state. Like I said, there's that wave that goes through the country. So please take advantage of that information. On the positive side, we now have 71% of our population fully vaccinated. But what that leaves us with, if we take out the number of individuals under the age of five years old, is a stunning nearly 200,000 individual residents of DuPage County who are eligible for vaccination, who have not received even one vaccine yet. So we have a ways to go. And why that's important is because of the 2,886 hospitalized or deceased COVID cases reported from last December through December 6th of this year, 95.3% occurred in persons not fully vaccinated against COVID-19. And not fully vaccinated now includes the need for a booster shot, although the definition hasn't changed officially from CDC as being under "fully vaccinated." Still, in order to have a deterring effect on the spread of COVID, we now see the need for a booster shot. Anyone who is 16 or older can get a booster shot, is recommended to get a booster shot, is also recommended to take the necessary prevention precautions. The best way to avoid hospitalization in a serious case of COVID is not to get sick in the first place. We now rank first out of 102 counties in the largest percentage of 5-11-year-olds who have received at least one dose of vaccine. 56 healthcare providers in DuPage County are administering pediatric COVID vaccine, and we want those numbers to continue to increase. We have an astounding, it's like hard to believe, the position we were in last year compared with this year as far as vaccine availability. There are 50, over 50 providers within six miles of 60187. Very, very different situation than we were last year. And our local efforts continue with our mobile clinics. This week, we're at the Villa Park Library, we're at our North Public Health Center in Addison, we're at the IBEW 701 in Warrenville. So we continue to get out and about. We also have information included in your packet on monoclonal antibodies. That is a treatment for for individuals who have been, who have tested positive. It's an IV infusion. It must be provided within days of that diagnosis. So it's really important that people who get a positive test, if they have underlying conditions, talk to their doctors about getting this monoclonal antibody. Because my understanding from talking to people who have had that treatment is you go from very sick to feeling pretty good very, very quickly. It's supremely effective, and it doesn't matter if you've been vaccinated or not. So key takeaways, again, vaccines, including boosters, are the most important tool in ending this pandemic. Consistent attention to prevention strategies, it seems old and very elementary, but those prevention strategies continue to be effective. Masks, ventilation, testing before attending large events, and staying home when you feel sick are also important. And third, healthcare resources in DuPage County are robust, particularly when compared to other parts of the state. However, they are not unlimited. And the important part to remember is, we all can do something to help. Thanks.
All right, let's try to be as prudent as we can with questions. Go member to start, and then member Rutledge, Pacholski, Garcia.
Thank you so much for that presentation. I always appreciate what you have to say about this. I have a specific question from a constituent who, or maybe a tip for you when you put out those caravan sheets. She said, "Thank you for doing all of these. My Naperville North's daughter tells me that unvaccinated friends are now eating lunch alone as no one will sit with them. Makes me so sad, adding to the mental health worries of our students."
Right.
So she was trying to get a bunch of her daughter's friends over to the caravan, which was there last week. Let me see where, it was at the Children's Museum in Naperville?
Yes, yes.
And on that poster, it said ages 5-plus. And then I guess she called the Health Department asking if 16-plus-year-olds could get the vaccine too. And I understand that the dose for the under 12 is a smaller dose than what's approved for adults. Anyway, my comment, I guess, is, could we get those posters that many of us have been sharing on social media to more clearly identify which each caravan visit age group would be for? Did that make sense?
It does, however, each, the caravan should be able to vaccinate anybody 5 years old and up.
Oh, because she was told not for 16-year-olds. It was only for the 12 to 5 to 12-year-olds.
Oh, and it might have been just because it was at the Children's Museum, perhaps. But absolutely, I can take that recommendation back. The issue to remember, though, is 18 and younger must have a parent guardian signing up.
Gotcha, thank you. So my point is to make these posters, these caravan posters, very specific so people know.
Yep, if it's only 5 to 11, then say that.
Thank you so much, Karen.
Gotcha, yep.
All right, member Rutledge, please.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you, Karen, for updating us on where I'm sure we thought we would be past this all for now. My question may not be for you specifically, but I've been seeing more and more reports in the news about employers who are adding a surcharge to the cost of healthcare for non-vaccinated employees. And I'm just wondering if that's something that we're looking at. And I know that, I don't think there is even a mechanism to know who has and has not been vaccinated in our workforce. But if this is going to keep going on, I think that that may have to be something that we'll consider to try to get this 200,000 people to step up and get vaccinated. So that's my question, and I don't really expect an answer today, but I think it's something that we should take a look at.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Member Pacholski, I have next.
Thank you. You know, 200,000 you talk about, what's their biggest reason for not doing it? And you're going to have X amount of people, regardless of what the technology, what the medicine is, who are just adamant that they want, they're never going to get a vaccination. What percentage is that? Do we know what that percentage is? And how do we combat this 200,000 number? And is the biggest reason because they already had COVID? They don't think they have to? I mean, we're going to have a percentage that, no matter what happens, they're not going to do. And I was curious, what the biggest reason or what the biggest purpose for not taking a vaccination was with this 200,000, if you have that information?
So we don't have it specifically for DuPage, but we follow it very closely because nationally we're getting information on this. And one of the primary reasons is what you mentioned, that I already had COVID, so I feel like my antibodies are strong and I don't need a vaccine. Another is concern that the vaccine was developed so quickly with new kind of science, the mRNA, in spite of the fact that we've been using that kind of technique for decades. Another is simply, like you're saying, I don't like being told what to do and I don't want to introduce something outside of my body, so.
Member Garcia.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Thank you, Karen, so much for all the hard work you and your staff are doing. You know, I can't believe it's already been 692 days of this, and I know we're all getting tired of some of the restrictions. But I know we've talked about it on the Health Department Board, and I want to make it clear here, one way to stop these variations is to get the vaccine, correct?
Right, right. Yeah, to reduce, yeah, to reduce the community transmission, yes.
Correct. So once we reduce the community transmission, the chances of any more variations appearing are going to become less.
Yes.
So if we were all to get vaccinated, then maybe we could actually start stopping some of these restrictions because we would all be in the, and I just wanted to make that point clear. I know you guys do that all the time.
Absolutely.
But I just wanted to make that clear here, that if we all get on the same page, get vaccinated, get your booster, we could maybe, maybe stop, you know, doing everything everybody's tired of doing.
Right, and if for some reason vaccine isn't in your future, then please do these other things.
Exactly.
Wear a mask.
Thank you to you and your staff. Thank you to all the healthcare workers out there. I mean, it's, I just feel for them so terribly. So thank you.
All right, thank you. Next up, we have Members A and then Member Covert.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Karen. You brought up face coverings. I mean, are there, we're only one of six states that has a face covering mandate on there. I mean, are we just that much smarter? Are our numbers that much better? We hear about, you talked about other states down in the southern part of the United States that don't have mask mandates that have, you know, lower rates than we do. I mean, at some point, I mean, my concern is, and I know we've heard it, but from parents with children in school, and we know that the state of Illinois, as I already said, this is having a dramatic effect on kids and learning at this point with COVID and younger kids and talking. And I mean, at some point, is a state going to let local governments decide what's best for them? I mean, because again, we can all say, well, they're crazy or not. I think parents are concerned about the best for their children. I don't think any parent wants to put their child at harm's way because of a mask.
Right.
But if it's affecting them long-term and learning and their own health, and there is natural immunity out there, and there's other things that people will talk about, we can't just discard that. We have to, I mean, listen to some of these people because, I mean, their concerns are out there. And I mean, I understand it. I may not always agree with it, but I mean, I understand it. But the point, when even the state says that our learning in our younger children and the whole school system is going down because of this, I mean, at what point do we see a loosening of this at some, you know, area? And I mean, I know you like using the numbers, it doubled, you know, and all this, and how many hospitals do we have? And you know, if somebody doubled, if they had four cases last week and they have eight this week, that's, oh my God, it doubled. I mean, but if they had two and it went to four, it doubled. I mean, again, we're a county of almost a million people.
Right, right.
I mean, these numbers, when we use those kind of inflammatory numbers like doubling and quadrupling, but the number is still very small.
So, so what, yeah, I'll start with that first, and then I'll go to the masks and face covering. So what we heard from our hospital partners today is that three of our hospitals have more than 50 individuals now who are diagnosed with COVID. They indicated that they are having to open overflow units on a routine basis to accommodate the additional cases of COVID. We have what we call ED borders. It's kind of a new, you're not in the hospital because frankly, there's not a bed. So they take care of you in the emergency room. And one of the hospitals indicated that typically, you know, they start accumulating ED borders Monday, Tuesday. Typically, by Saturday, they're able to reduce that number to zero, and then it starts all over again. So I know we have had this, we have had this discussion before. I don't use those numbers lightly. If you remember back in June, July, we had 10 individuals in the hospitals across all of DuPage. Now we have 40, 50, and it doesn't appear to be slowing. So I know, I know, we very much want to say, we're almost through this. I don't know that we are because guess what else is happening in December, January, and February? It's flu. And so we are, our capacity, if that, if I could make a plea to you, is our healthcare capacity is limited. We don't, we can't just keep putting more and more people in the hospitals and saying, well, if they didn't know better to get a vaccine or not, which is back to the whole issue that you raised, Members A, about masks. And yeah, I want to, again, I'm trying very hard to, whether it should be a mandate or not, is not something someone in my position, I believe, should have a say in. That's up to people who are elected by the people. However, public health research tells us that masks are effective. So whether or not it's mandated, I would encourage people to use face coverings, to use it all the time, and to use it, you know, the better the fit, the better the protection.
Karen, how healthy is it to sit here for four, five, or six hours with a mask on? Say in a county board or anywhere else, or in a school? How healthy is that without getting fresh air and breathing in the same mask all day?
Yeah, so.
There's got to be some health negativity there also.
So hopefully, you will be, if you're more than four hours, you will be changing out your masks, which is the recommendation for masking in the first place. But the studies do not show, if you do that, that they do not show any harmful effect. It's not like you're breathing carbon dioxide. It's not that, you know, if it gets soiled, you need to replace it and put a different mask on. But there have been no detrimental effects associated with mask wearing when the masks are worn as kind of prescribed for children as well.
All right, our last question, I'm going to hope, is Member Covert, so we can keep on moving here. But yeah, Member Covert, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just had a couple of questions before I get to my main question. I did have a quick question on the, just to touch on the mask mandate, because a lot of people, you know, have the question of, if I'm vaccinated, why should I wear a mask? And to kind of tie in my next question with this one, I was thinking, I don't know whether we have this in place, but there's a lot of people with different concerns, like, hey, we have antibodies, we don't need a vaccine, or whatever the concern is. Do we have some sort of campaign from the Health Department that addresses those specific concerns so we could target those issues and answer those concerns and deal with those, you know, those issues with people so they are more comfortable in getting vaccinated?
We certainly have information on our website as far as a campaign. I think that's a great idea, and we can explore that further.
All right, any further questions? Awesome, thank you so much, Karen.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Just to complete Chair's remarks, today we are pleased to vote on a contract with the employees of the, for the employees of the DuPage Care Center. This culminates a negotiation period with a great deal of give and take. We believe this contract represents a fair and mutually beneficial wage and benefit package that will provide security and stability for our employees. Is it important that all of our employees know their value to the county? And our care center employees have worked diligently and carefully during this pandemic to serve and help protect both the health of our vulnerable care center residents. Additionally, today, we will consider the long-range care transportation plan. I will allow Transportation Chairman Pacholsky to speak more on this forward-thinking document during his committee report. I'll simply say that we are grateful to Chair Pacholsky. I'll simply say that we are grateful to Chair Pacholski, Director Snyder, and John Looper for engaging our stakeholders and citizens in a thoughtful planning process. The resulting blueprint for transportation investments will guide DuPage DOT for the next two decades. Chairman Cronin is supportive and also asks for your support on the long-range transportation plan today. Finally, I don't think that in March of 2020, we envisioned that in December of 2021, we would still not be able to hold our traditional employee holiday breakfast due to health concerns. However, that is where we are today. The health and safety of our employees remains our top priority. Therefore, I'm going to take this opportunity on behalf of Chairman Cronin and the entire Board to offer our heartfelt thanks to all our county employees for their dedicated service this past year. I wish all of you a happy holiday season and best wishes for a happy, healthy, and safe New Year. All right. Next up, according to our county board rules, members of the public shall be afforded time to address the board during public comment. Individual remarks shall not exceed three minutes in length, nor shall the total time provided for all remarks exceed 30 minutes. We have one in-person speaker today, so we'll start there. Eric Willoughby, I believe?
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Eric Willoughby. I come before you today to remind you that we are a nation of laws. Laws founded on the guiding principles laid out to us by our Constitution. When we review the text of the Constitution, we are reminded that the First Amendment clearly states, "Congress shall make no law respecting an establishment of religion or prohibiting the free exercise thereof, or abridging the freedom of speech, or of the press, or the right of the people peaceably to assemble and to petition the government for a redress of grievances." More specifically, it outlines that there shall be a separation of church and state. Based off the invocation of prayer that I witnessed at the beginning of this meeting, one would assume no such clause exists within our Constitution. By turning a blind eye to the specific clause of our Constitution, we open the floodgates for turning our backs on our founding principles. We cannot govern based off pick-and-choose, I would call it grocery store, government. Turning our backs on our principles would be tragic. I remind you, the night before Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. was fatally shot and killed in Memphis, Tennessee, he gave his famous mountaintop speech. Within the speech, he is quoted as saying, "All we have to say to America is this: Be true to what you said on paper." Members, by invoking a prayer before a county board meeting, you're in contempt of our Constitution and therefore not staying true to what we said on paper. I remind you that this is a great county made up of more than just Christians, or made up of Jews, Hindus, yes, Christians, and many, many more sects of diverse religion. So let's stay true to what we said on paper and put an end to these invocation. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Now we'll move to the online submitted public comments.
All right. Public comment is from Kyle Hughes. Subject: Fair wages for DuPage County jail nurses. Comment: No raises in 10 years is too long. Next comment is from Tom Hughes of Cortland, Illinois. Subject: DuPage County jail medical staff. Comment: These employees work hard for this county and deserve your support and a fair Next comment is from David Hughes of Oswego. Subject: DuPage County jail medical staff. Comment: Please support a fair contract for the medical staff at DuPage County Jail. Our essential workers deserve fair payment. Next comment is from Eden Selis or Selise. Subject: Support DuPage County jail medical staff. Comment: Fair wages for DuPage County jail nurses. Next comment is from Peggy Hughes of Cortland, Illinois. Subject: Medical and mental health staff. Comment: For the past three years, DuPage County correctional medical and mental health staff have been standing alone in the fight for fair and equitable treatment. Please stand with us. DuPage County medical and mental health staff provide and care for abused and battered women and those struggling with mental illness. We are committed to helping this vulnerable population. Please support us in our efforts to obtain fair and equitable treatment. Next comment is from Emmanuel Cortez. Subject: Support DuPage County jail medical staff. Comment: The faces of DuPage County jail medical and mental health staff are diverse and represent DuPage County. They deserve a living wage after no increases in years. Support your neighbor, your friend, your family. Next comment is from Sally Puckett. Subject: Fair treatment for jail healthcare staff. Comment: For the past three years, DuPage County correctional medical and mental health staff have been standing alone in the fight for fair and equitable treatment. Please stand with us. DuPage County medical and mental health staff provide and care for abused and battered women and those struggling with mental illness. We are committed to helping this vulnerable population. Please support us in our efforts to obtain fair and equitable treatment. Next comment is from Sharon Cohn of Bethel, Missouri. Subject: Fair treatment for jail healthcare staff. Comment: We never missed a day defending the jail against COVID. Please support the medical and mental health staff fight for fair and equitable treatment. Next comment is from Peggy Shawback Hughes. Subject: Fair treatment for jail healthcare staff. Comment: The faces of DuPage County jail medical and mental health staff are very diverse. We are minorities, females, immigrants, single mothers, widowed, divorced, 60-plus-years-old, and worthy of respect and to make a living wage. No wage increases in years. Please support the medical and mental health staff fight for fair and equitable treatment. Next comment is from Beth Rungy of Gerard, Illinois. Subject: Fair treatment of jail healthcare staff. Comment: Unionize and fair contracts. Next comment is from Edgar Powell. Subject: Board meeting schedule. Comment: I am writing in regards to Action Item 21-22-17, Resolution Amending the DuPage County Board Meeting Schedule. I am delightfully ecstatic to see that the board may choose to meet at 6:00 PM on certain days in 2022. I wholeheartedly agree that this makes meetings more accessible to the public, especially those who cannot attend meetings during the day. Next comment is from Orlando Venecia. Subject: DuPage County jail medical, of Naperville. Subject: DuPage County jail medical. Comment: While the world shut down, we showed up. While people worked from home in their pajamas, we worked on the front line in protective suits. Please support DuPage County medical staff. Next comment is from Michelle Findrick of Wheaton. Subject: Fair and equitable treatment. Comment: We have never missed a day defending the jail against COVID. No wage increases for years. Please support the medical and mental health staff fight for fair and equitable treatment. Next comment is listed as Name, Request for Fair Treatment. Address: Wheaton, Illinois. Subject: Unfair labor practices. Comment: Years of unfair labor practices, below-market pay, and no wage increases for past several years. The Sheriff's Bureau Management and Administrative Command have ignored our efforts for the past three years of union negotiations to establish fair treatment for a department primarily comprised of female medical staff fighting for equal rights in a male-dominated Next comment is from Caesar Pahario of Wheaton. Subject: Support mental health clinicians. Comment: DuPage County jail mental health and medical staff are very diverse. We are minorities, females, immigrants, single mothers, divorced, U.S. veterans, all worthy of respect, equitable and humane treatment for a living wage. Please support us. Next comment is from Laura McQueen. No subject is provided. The comment: Please support our efforts to improve conditions for our medical and mental health teams. We've had to endure years of unfair labor practices. Instead of promoting by objective standards and capabilities, family and friends are chosen for the best positions. We haven't had a pay raise in years. How many more of our best nurses do you want to lose? Next comment is from Jennifer Booth. Subject: Fair treatment for jail healthcare staff. Comment: While the world shut down, we showed up. While people worked from home, we worked on the front line in protective suits. Please support DuPage County medical and mental health staff fight for fair treatment. Next comment is from Sharon Deutsch. Subject: Fair treatment for jail healthcare staff. Comment: For the past three years, DuPage County correctional medical and mental health staff have been standing alone in the fight for fair and equitable treatment. Please stand with us. DuPage County medical and mental health provide and care for abused and battered women and those struggling with mental illness. We are committed to helping this vulnerable population. Please support us in our efforts to obtain fair and equitable treatment. Next comment is from Rosalie Endrinal. Subject: Fair wages to nurses. Comment: Cost of living had gone up. Gas prices had gone up. Almost everything had gone up, except for the wages for the nurses at the county jail. Fairness and equality is what we want and need. Next comment is from Pooja Sharma. Comment: Fair treatment, equal pay, yearly raises based on performance for DuPage County Jail's medical staff unit. Next comment is from Laura McQueen. Comment: I'm concerned that these negotiations are not in good faith. One of your lead negotiators, the healthcare unit administrator, started a company called Nova Correctional Solutions in 2020, right during these negotiations. Her company supplies jails and prisons with healthcare personnel. This interest conflict appears to be a violation of DuPage County's ethics policy, 9.2B on secondary employment. I'm concerned as our negotiations have stalled, what are we to think? Next comment is from Laura Palaio. Subject: Fair treatment for jail healthcare staff. Comment: Please stand with the DuPage County correctional medical and mental health staff so our voices can be heard and respected by our employer. Frontline staff have years of service without pay increase. We work in a stressful environment that is high-risk for assault and care for individuals when most wouldn't due to the nature of crimes. Nursing staff is chronically short-staffed with a high turnover rate of new hires. We fear for our future with the healthcare administrators' correction agency outsourcing our current positions without a union contract. Please stand in solidarity with us for fair wages, benefits, and workplace safety. Next comment is from Brandy Rickett. Subject: Fair treatment for jail healthcare staff. Comment: Please support DuPage County correctional medical and mental health for fair treatment. Our staff has gone years without a raise while working in a dangerous environment. Nursing staff is short most days with need for nurses to constantly work overtime. Job security is jeopardized with the possibility of agency nurses contracting for positions. Please stand in solidarity with us for fair wages, benefits, and workplace safety. Next comment is from Renee Salagi. Subject: Fair treatment for jail healthcare staff. Comment: The faces of DuPage County jail medical and mental health staff are very diverse. We are minorities, females, immigrants, single mothers, widowed, divorced, 60-plus-years-old, and worthy of respect and to make a living wage. No wage increases in years. Please support the medical and mental health staff fight for fair and equitable treatment. Next comment is from Mrs. D. Subject: DuPage County jail healthcare staff. Comment: The healthcare professionals at the jail have been dealing with years of unfair labor practices, below-market wages, no wage increases, and fear of losing their jobs to outsourcing to contract companies. Support them in the fight for a fair contract. Last public comment is from Karen Jones. Subject: Grant Ekoff drinking alcohol. Comment: We have witnessed Grant Ekoff outdrinking alcohol and driving on several occasions. That concludes public comment.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Deputy Clerk. With leave of the body, we are going to move into executive session in order to accommodate the schedule of our attorney who's helping us today. So if I could take a motion and a second to move it to executive session? Oh, I'm sorry. All right. Pursuant to the Open Meetings Act 5, ILCS 120-2, C11, pending litigation. Or, in collective bargaining? Okay. All right, so we have a motion and a second. All right, we're just waiting for everyone to come back in here and for IT to give us a heads up. Good? I'm sorry? Okay. All right. So everyone, we're back in open session. I am going to make a motion for a brief recess, five minutes tops, because we've gone two hours, and I want to make sure we can officially get through the rest of the agenda. So I have a motion? All in favor? Any opposed? All right, five minutes, guys. Thank you. Thank you. Yeah, do you vote aye on the consent items, member Schorzy? All right.
Selman?
Aye.
And Tornatori?
All right, thank you. Next up for county board items, Member Jim Zay is going to read this section, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Couple items today, I move on CBR 54021.
Second?
Okay. And then we do have a amendment. So I move on Amendment CBR 54021. There are two parts to this motion. First, at the November 23rd county board meeting, we approved various employee policy changes. And to have our rules match these policies, I move to strike and delete Section 2, our titled "Appointment of Deputies and Employees," and add the following paragraph to Section 2, Section 1, titled "Appointments," which reads, "The county board chair may appoint, with advice and consent of and upon majority vote of the county board, department heads as considered necessary, except in the office of any elected county officer. The county board authorizes department heads to hire employees within approved headcount and within approved salary ranges." Attached to this motion is a redlined vergi, ver, vergi, good, version of the affected portions of Section 2. Second, the intent of changing Section 5, subsection 2, paragraph C, was to put the six countywide officials that primarily used the Information Technology Department, a scrupulous error was made to put the regional superintendent of schools when it was meant to be the county recorder. I move to strike the words "regional superintendent" and "regional superintendent of schools" and put, insert the word "recorder." That's the amendment.
All right, second? All right, so we have a motion and a second on the amendment. Mr. Deputy Clerk, please call a roll on the amendment.
Zay?
Aye.
Chaplain? Chavez? Covert?
Aye.
Desart?
Aye.
Diciani? Ekoff? Garcia?
Aye.
Hart? Krajewski? LaPlante? Ozog? Pachowski?
Renahan?
Rutledge? Schworzy? Selman?
Here.
Tornatori?
And Zay?
Here.
All right, we've got a quorum. So just to remind everyone, now we are on item seven of our agenda. So I will take a motion on consent items. Mr. Deputy Clerk, please call the roll.
Zay?
Aye.
Chaplain? Chavez? Covert?
Aye.
Desart?
Aye.
Diciani? Ekoff?
Aye.
Garcia?
Aye.
Hart?
Aye.
Krajewski? LaPlante? Ozog? Pachowski?
Aye.
Renahan?
Aye.
Rutledge?
Aye.
Schworzy? Sel-
Yeah, do you vote aye on the consent items, Member Schworzy?
Aye.
All right.
Selman?
Aye.
And Tornatori?
Aye.
All right, thank you. Next up for county board items, Member Jim Zay is going to read this section, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Couple items today, I move on CBR 54021.
Second? All right, so we have a motion and a second on the amendment. Mr. Deputy Clerk, please call a roll on the amendment.
Zay?
Aye.
Chaplain? Chavez? Covert?
Aye.
Desart?
Aye.
Garcia?
Aye.
Hart?
Aye.
Krajewski? LaPlante? Ozog? Pachowski?
Aye.
Renahan?
Aye.
Rutledge?
Aye.
Desart?
Aye.
Diciani? Ekoff?
Aye.
Garcia?
Aye.
Hart?
Aye.
Krajewski?
Aye.
LaPlante? Ozog? Pachowski?
Aye.
Renahan?
Aye.
Rutledge?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
Aye.
Schworzy?
Aye.
Selman?
Aye.
And Tornatori?
Aye.
Motion passes, Member Zay?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Move on action item B, amending the 2022 county board regular meeting schedule.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any comments, questions, or discussion on this item? Member Garcia?
Yeah, this is to change it so that we have some night meetings, if I'm correct. And I just am a little concerned for this one. We just gave a pay equity raise to some of the staff, and now we're going to be asking them to stay later. And I know that maybe seems nothing, but now we're looking for overtime, and we're looking for them to change their schedules to be able to come in and stuff like that. So it gives me pause on giving that. We still have the YouTube channel with everything going out all the time. We have the, the- The daytime, I mean, people can come to that. And I know that we were trying to be as transparent as possible, but that's why we've got some kind of idea about going to the night meetings. But it just, it just, you know, seems like we're kind of like saying, here, here to the staff, you know, here, we're finally going to give you a little bit more of what you deserve, and then here, by the way, here, you got to work nights. So, so that just gives me a little bit of pause. So I just wanted to say that. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Garcia. Just to reassure you, we definitely talked with staff and department heads of all the affected committees before we made this change, because I think you're right. We don't want to tell people, oh, surprise, you're here till 6:30 now, but well noted. Any other comments, questions, concerns? Sorry, Member Tornatori?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm, I'm opposed to this resolution, and I'll be voting no. And I have a couple of reasons. The first is a personal reason, and that is, based on the calendar that I thought we had adopted, I have made a commitment in my law practice to represent a municipality on Tuesday evenings, which is a, an agreement that I cannot and do not want to breach. And if that's the case and this resolution passes, I will not be attending those three county board meetings, which causes me some concern. While that may not be a reason for some of you to vote no, there are some other reasons, and one of which is we've done this before. For those who've been around a while, we used to have quarterly evening meetings on the assumption that it was going to bring more people to the county board meetings, and we found the direct opposite took place. We virtually had no one here, other than the county board meetings and staff. I, I also, and I'm sure it was well-intended, and take issue with the language in the resolution dealing with, this would encourage public participation and make it more accessible to members of the public. I think any of us who've been around in the last year can certainly recollect that we've had any number of people here, individually and interest groups, who have found their way to 10 o'clock Tuesday board meetings. So I'm not so sure that, that we haven't been as accessible. In addition, we now have Zoom, we stream, we have electronic public comment, we have people who have actually been here on any number of meetings on issues that they felt compelled to be here to comment on. We've certainly seen many of our favorite public commenters comment regularly on electronically. So I'm, I'm not sure that an evening meeting is going to change that. I haven't had anybody in my district talk to me about an evening meeting and the necessity for one. I don't know that there's a public clamoring for evening meetings. I think this is, again, a change, and I'm a nocturnal person. I grew up with evening meetings, so I don't necessarily have a problem with them, but I just don't know that it's in the best interest of the county to be doing that, especially since we already did adopt a calendar. To Member Garcia's point, we're asking now our staff to put on some additional time. That includes our IT people, our cleaning people, our security people, the county board office staff, department heads, all of their key personnel, elected officials, their key personnel, to work 12, 14-hour days, if they start at 8 o'clock in the morning and have to be here till 8:00 or 9:00, 10:00 at night. And lastly, I did a little bit of a dive in terms of other entities that have meetings on Tuesday night, and I can tell you without giving you any specific information, there are any number of townships, school boards, school districts, planning and zoning committee meetings, fire and police, homeowners associations that have Tuesday night meetings. I did a deeper dive into the municipalities that have Tuesday night meetings, and I found that for certain, there are 12 and possibly 13 municipalities that have their board meetings on the Tuesday evenings in question. They include Bensonville, Aurora, Bartlett, Downers Grove, Hinsdale, Itasca, Naperville, Oakbrook, Oakbrook Terrace, Wayne, and West Chicago. I, I think that to have those elected officials and/or their constituents have to choose between a local village or town board meeting, or city council meeting, and county board meeting is unfortunate, again, given the fact that we've kind of owned the Tuesday 10 o'clock in the morning time slot, and I think people have gotten used to that. So while I don't think it's necessarily a bad idea, I don't think that the public is going to be any less served by us meeting at 10:00 a.m. on a Tuesday than they would be on an evening. I think there are some drawbacks to this, as I indicated earlier, our staff, and possibly a conflict with some, some other entities. So for those reasons, I will be voting no.
All right, next up? Thank you. Next up, I have Member Desart and then Member Schworzy.
Thank you. I was just going to say, I'm, I've been a vocal supporter for having, peppering in some evening meetings for our board, but I just wanted to let you know that I will be a no vote for this schedule, because I don't think these particular dates were clearly thought out, were done transparently or collegiately. So for those reasons, I'll be a no vote. Thank you.
Just to clarify, we didn't throw a dart at a calendar. These were heavily thought out and discussed with party, with department heads. Member Schworzy?
Thank you, Madam Chair, Vice Chair. Many of the same reasons that Member Tornatori spoke about, I'm going to also vote no. 14-year Village Trustee in Carroll Stream with evening meetings, we rarely, rarely had people coming to those meetings. I know a lot of people have things going on. And with the sake of consistency, making sure everybody, the public knows that we're going to stay at 10:00 a.m. versus having some sprinkled 6:00 p.m. meetings in there, I, I think it would be our benefit to keep them as is. Thank you.
Anyone else have any, yeah, Member Krajewski?
Yes, thank you. Again, I'm going to be voting no for a lot of the same reasons that Member Tornatori stated, but specifically in my district, Downers Grove and Naperville, which I've been to and at their Tuesday night meetings, and testified and been at their meetings, and I also have a homeowner's, some say the most vocal one in the county, that has their meeting once a month on a Tuesday night. So again, I'm not going to be supporting this. And we did try this years ago, do a couple night meetings, and we found we had virtually nobody here. We had more during the day than we did in the evening meetings.
All right, Member Covert?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just had a couple of questions. How did the staff feel about this schedule? And also, you know, I noticed that these, there's just a few meetings that are in the evenings. Are we doing this more to, more to test it out to see how it's received? Because I know circumstances have changed during COVID. And so I just wanted to know, is it more, you know, just two questions. How does the staff feel about it? What's the department head say? And is it really going to be harmful more than, you know, I, I don't think it hurts to try to see how it's going to go.
I'm going to have Nick come up and address the first question, but I can address the second one. The reason that we've, you know, we're not, we want this to be a data collection thing. That's why we've only done three. I've certainly heard the arguments that no one comes. The world has changed. People are far more involved in their local government, and that's especially true during COVID, when we have been the direct response. It's not the state, it's not the federal government. In many cases, it's not your municipality, it's the county. I have consistently heard since 2017 that folks in my district can't attend, would never think to take off work to attend. I myself was unable to attend a board meeting before being elected to this body. So I've heard the demands, and I'm a little disappointed in the conversation today, but that's what democracy is for. So Nick, if you want to address the feedback about the staff option?
Yeah, I mean, from the staff, I mean, obviously, most of the staff have been through night meetings. I mean, we will make ourselves available for whatever time that the boards decide, the, the morning or the evening. I mean, that's, we, we can definitely accommodate either one, so.
Awesome. All right, any other questions, Member Hart?
Yep, thank you, Chair Selman. And I actually will probably be a minority on this one, but I actually am in support of this calendar for a lot of the same reasons that you laid out, Member Selman. I totally understand and respect the views that a lot of members have offered, but I think it's important to give our constituents an option. As you said, it's very difficult for people who work full-time to get here to Tuesday 10:00 a.m. meetings. And I know that's our job, that's why we're all here. I shared the same experience that you had when I first joined the board as well, and balancing conflicts with the schedule. That's my problem.
out, Member Selman. I totally understand and respect the views that a lot of members have offered, but I think it's important to give our constituents an option. As you said, it's very difficult for people who work full-time to get here to Tuesday 10:00 a.m. meetings. And I know that's our job. That's why we're all here. I shared the same experience that you had when I first joined the board as well, and balancing conflicts with the schedule. That's my problem, because I chose to run for this board, but our constituents didn't. And I think giving them an option for both morning and evening over the course of our calendar is something that would be appropriate, and hopefully increase the option for them to engage with their government. It may not define the outcome, but I think it's about giving options. So thank you.
Thank you. Any other? All right, Member Covert.
I just wanted to add one more thing. When we are having these discussions, Madam Chair, I know you work really hard on this schedule, and you're very diligent in your work and very transparent. I've been discussing this issue with you, and I know it went through the Rules Committee. So I just ask any board members to keep any disrespectful comments towards you or other members, just to themselves. Thanks.
Thank you. You didn't hear it? Oh.
I just didn't hear it, didn't understand it, about keeping something to yourself.
I was referring to Member Desart's comments towards Madam Chair.
I didn't understand it, but okay.
Oh, well, point of personal privilege. I didn't realize I was being disrespectful. So I don't even understand what you're trying to say, Member Covert.
All right, any other questions or comments on this item as amended? Sure.
Okay, well, thank you. It's a nice-spirited debate here. It has been tried. We've tried to do budget meetings. We've tried to do night meetings. We have four. We went to three. We went to two. We went to one. And that's fine. Things do change. My problem is the staff. If anyone's noticed here, these aren't short meetings. I mean, if we go off at 7:00 and we have something going on, I mean, are we going to be here till 10, 11:00 at night with our staff starting here at 7:30, 8:00 in the morning? And how do we then, how do they get overtime? Most of these people aren't eligible for overtime. So they get comp time? I mean, how does that go? So again, mine's more of a staff thing. We put a lot of strain already on our department heads on Tuesdays, and then to make this, you know, even more, I think that would be difficult. So I won't be supporting it either.
All right, we have a motion in a second on the item as amended. Mr. Deputy Clerk, please call the roll.
Zay.
No.
Chaplin, Chavez. Covert.
Aye.
Desart. Deceani Ekoff. Garcia. No. Hart. Kuduski.
No.
LaPlante. Ozog. Pachalsky.
No.
Renahan. Rutledge.
Aye.
Schorzy.
No.
Selman. And Tornatore.
No.
Five voting aye, nine voting nay.
Five voting aye, nine voting nay. Motion fails. Thank you. Next up is Finance. Member Chaplin had to leave, so Member Kuduski, please.
Microphone.
FIR 0017-22, Acceptance Appropriation of the Home Investment Partnership Grant.
There's been a motion in a second. Mr. Deputy Clerk, please call the roll.
Kuduski.
Aye.
LaPlante. Ozog. Pachalsky. Renahan. Rutledge.
Aye.
Schorzy. Selman.
Aye.
Tornatore.
Aye.
Zay. Chaplin. Chavez. Covert.
Aye.
Desart. Deceani. Ekoff. Garcia.
Aye.
And Hart.
Motion passes. Member Kuduski.
I move on FIR 0016-22, Acceptance Appropriation of the Help America Vote Act.
All right, there's been a request for leave. Leave is granted.
I move on FIR 0017-22, Resolution Acceptance Appropriation of the Illinois Voter Registration Grant.
Request for leave. Leave is granted.
I move on FIR 0011-22, Resolution for Annual Financial Commitments in Support of the University of Illinois.
All right, just a reminder, let everyone read what the item is and how much money we're spending. It's for the public, not for us. Leave's been requested. Leave is granted. Thank you.
Thank you. I move on FIR 0012-22, Resolution for the Annual Financial Commitments in Support of the National Association of Counties, $18,338.
Leave is granted.
I move on FIR 0013-22, An Annual Financial Commitments in Support of the Illinois State Association of Counties, $29,800.
Leave is granted.
I move on FIR 0014-22, Resolution for Annual Financial Commitments in Support of DuPage County Health Department Hope Initiative, $200,000.
I'm sorry, can you repeat the first part of that, Member Kuduski? I didn't hear you.
It was the annual financial commitments in support of the DuPage County Health Department Hope Initiative, $200,000.
Thank you. There's been a request for leave. Leave is granted.
Move on FIR 0015-22, Resolution for the Annual Financial Commitments in Support of the DuPage County Convention, or DuPage Convention and Visitors Bureau, $50,000.
Leave is granted.
I move on FIR 0019-22, which is a resolution, authorization of contract with American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees Council 31.
All right, colleagues, truly please, let the member reading, complete their sentence, and then we can move it. Otherwise, we can go back to roll calls, but it's incredibly difficult to hear the cross talk. So, thank you. I'm chairing it, and I'm asking for decorum. That's all. Thank you. There's a request for leave. Leave is granted.
I move on FIR 0545-21, Resolution for Intergovernmental Agreement with the Illinois Housing Development Authority to Implement the Emergency Rental Assistance Program, $25,879,636.80.
Leave is granted. Thank you.
I move on FIR 0020-22, Resolution for Additional Appropriation for the ARPA Fund for Fiscal Year 2022, and its $47,944,778.
Leave is granted.
I move on FIR 0022-22, Resolution for Additional Appropriation for the Law Library, $15,006.
Leave is granted.
I move on FIR 0021-22, Authorization to Transfer $109,483 in Budget to Circuit Court.
Leave is granted.
Move on FIR 0023-22, Resolution for Authorization to Transfer $37,372 in Budget to the Jury Commission.
Leave is granted.
I move on FIR 0025-22, Resolution for Authorization to Transfer $60,728 in Budget to the Regional Office of Education.
Leave is granted.
I move on FIR 0024-22, Resolution to Rescind the Abatement of the 2021 Tax Levy for the Limited Tax General Obligation Refunding Bonds, Courthouse.
Leave is granted.
I move on FIR 0018-22, Resolution for Budget Transfers, 12, 14, 2021 Budget Transfers Various Companies and Accounting Units.
Leave is granted.
I move on FIP 0009-22, Recommendation for the Approval of a Contract Purchase Order to Mesero Insurance Services to Provide Liability Insurance for the DuPage Care Center.
Leave is granted.
I move on FIP 0025-22, Approval of an Agreement with the DuPage Legal Aid Foundation to Provide Legal Services as a Special Assistant State's Attorney.
Ma'am Chair.
Yep, Member Zay.
Yeah, thank you. You know, our state's attorney was here, along with our chief judge. Just want to thank them. This is a new program that they came up with. A press release went out, and that is just going to expand his services in helping victims of domestic violence. And it's always their office and across the street, thinking of new ways to help our residents and our constituents. So just want to thank them for doing this new program and making a difference.
Thank you. Very nice, Member Zay. Did we have a request for leave? Leave is granted.
I move on FIP 0026-22, Approval of an Agreement with Bond Dixon Associates to Provide Legal Services as Special Assistant State's Attorneys.
Leave is granted.
I move on FIP 0027-22, Approval of an Agreement with Rock Fusco and Connolly LLC to Provide Legal Services as Special Assistant State's Attorneys.
Leave is granted.
I move on FIP 0028-22, Approval of an Agreement with the Soto's Law Firm to Provide Legal Services as Special Assistant State's Attorneys.
Leave is granted.
Last, I move on FIC0, CO0003-22, Amendment to Resolution FIP 0181-20, Issue to Runbeck Election Services, Inc. to Furnish and Deliver Ballot Envelope Processing System to Assist with the Processing of Ballots While Minimizing the Need for Social Distancing Protocols for the Clerk's Office of County.
Before we do leave, let's have a discussion. Member Zay.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. You know, this question came up, and I just didn't understand it, because the exhibit said it's printing of ballots, too. Is it printing of ballots, too, or is it, because we were told they're all going to be the same ballot printed?
Sure, so I can explain. So this is our vote-by-mail vendor. So in 2020, with the expansion of vote-by-mail, we contracted with an outside vendor to process the volume of vote-by-mail requests. It's really not practical to do 150,000 vote-by-mail ballots in-house with our staff and temporary staff and the low-volume printers. So this is the same vendor who we've used for vote-by-mail in 2020, continuing to use them in 2022. The ballots they print are uniform with the ballots that are printed at the polling places. So this is vote-by-mail. I don't know if that answers your question, but the ballots are uniform, and this is specifically the vendor who processes the high-volume vote-by-mail printing.
Yeah, maybe it's just a misunderstanding, because we had the presentations. It was, we're all going to have the same ballot printed. We assumed printed by the same machines, but you're saying, no, now the vote-by-mail is not going to be printed with this, the new machines can be printed by an outside vendor.
Well, that's the same process that was previously in place. We have the outside vendor print the vote-by-mail ballots.
Right, but we spent $10 million on new equipment, so we figured.
Right, and those replaced the in precinct and early voting. So I'm sorry if that was, you know, a misunderstanding on the fact that we are continuing to use the same vote-by-mail process that we did in 2020.
When you're saying processing, what does that mean? That kind of scares the living daylights out of me. I mean, are they looking at, are they taking the ballots out of the envelopes? Are they looking?
No, no, no. It's the printing and distribution of the ballots. They're then returned to us. This is the company that does the printing and distribution of the 150,000 vote-by-mail ballots.
And why didn't we go out for a new bid on this? Why didn't you just piggyback on from 2020 and not, for a new election year, do a new, do a new contract?
So Finance might be better able to speak on the bidding process of it. I mean, we were very happy with the performance of the vendor. My understanding is the contractual terms allow it to be amended in this manner. And so, you know, we're happy with it. We feel like we're getting a good service for a good price, so we're happy to continue with this.
Well, you see, when we get big increases, or it's up 100 and something percent or something, that's always a red flag to us.
Absolutely.
Okay.
All right, next up, I have Member Garcia, Pachalsky, then Ekoff.
Okay, and just for clarification sake, Deputy Clerk, the election equipment we got is to, for ballots to be printed on demand. Is that correct?
Correct.
So it isn't like they're going to print up a whole bunch of ballots. It's like, when you're, when you're actually voting, the ballot will be printed on demand.
Correct.
So that's why this would be a different service.
Right, so this is, again, with the expansion of vote-by-mail that occurred in 2020, and then the General Assembly made permanent with legislation this last year, we anticipate in 2022 having a high volume of vote-by-mail similar to what we did in 2020, which obviously was not anticipated, you know, before COVID and before vote-by-mail expanded the way it has across the country. So it's really just not practical to try to print 150,000 vote-by-mail ballots, put them in envelopes, mail them out with the space and staffing and resources we have. We contracted with a company that specializes in, you know, high-volume vote-by-mail printing and distribution. And so, yes, this is continuing that into 2022.
Member Pachalsky, then Ekoff, and Kuduski.
So this has nothing to do with whether we use the old voting machines, new voting machines, or whatever voting equipment machine we got. Is that correct?
Correct. This vendor will print whatever ballot we give them, whichever voting system we choose to use. It will be uniform with whatever, you know, files and specifications we give them to print.
Was this not suitable for a bid? Because that was what I think what Jim Zay was trying to bring up. Does it say that we didn't go to bid with other people because of the expertise of this vendor, or is it just because we already did business with this vendor?
So again, I would probably defer to Finance on the specific terms of why this was suitable for being amended in this way.
All right, Jeff's coming on up.
The catric with Runbeck does include the ability to increase the quantities, if you will, of printing. So there was really no need to rebid, because this was just bid about that long ago, actually, less than a year ago, I think.
But 120% increase is what bothers us. And as a vendor, we've already had it. I think we should have done a little due diligence. We just accepted what they threw at us? Is that what we're saying?
This is a volume increase.
Yes. Yes, essentially, this is a volume increase. This is, when we contracted with them in 2020, it was not necessarily anticipated what volume of vote-by-mail would be demanded in 2022. Since then, you know, we've seen how vote-by-mail has taken on election-wide, or nationwide. We've seen the legislation that was passed in Illinois, making a permanent vote-by-mail list. So this is simply increasing the quantity, you know, to meet what we now anticipate the demand to be in 2022.
And I agree with you, because we bought those equipment. I was saying, gee, if we're, we should be pushing early voting and vote-by-mail, not, you know, voting on election day, because it will alleviate, I'm sorry, alleviate everything. But this is based on volume only, and it's anticipated volume. So it depends on how many people come out, and they actually vote by mail. Is that correct?
Right, and to be clear, if volume is less than anticipated, we are not required to spend the money that's being authorized today.
Thank you.
All right, Member Ekoff, and then Member Kuduski, please.
The only thing I was going to say is that the whole way this is going to work is you get the person of the voter's address, and then you print out the appropriate ballot for that address, right?
When someone makes a vote-by-mail request, or in precinct?
I thought it was both.
So yes, either way, when you send in a request, then we process your request either in the office or, you know, at the polling place.
Based on their address.
To see what ballot should be sent out to you, yes.
Right, you don't send out one that covers everything and cross out the ones that aren't applicable. You send out the applicable ballot.
Correct, correct.
Thank you.
Yeah, so when we did the presentations, and we were looking to move towards ballot by demand, so they show up at the polling place, and they hit a button and print, and they print the ballot out for the person. And that was going to be more safer, and it'd only be certain ballots. But it sounds like now we're going to order a whole bunch of ballots, and they're going to be sitting in there, and they're going to be, when the application comes in for mail, then we send them one of those ballots that these guys are printing?
No, so we get the applications, we provide the data to Runbeck to print.
So they're going to send out the?
No, no, Runbeck, we provide the data, then they print and mail out the ballots. So the way it worked in the past and will likely work, you know, in the upcoming election, is people can request vote-by-mail ballots in advance of the ballots actually being mailed out. So that first load, there's a big distribution that goes out from all the pent-up requests that were in the queue, and now we can start sending out ballots. And then, as additional requests come in, we provide data to Runbeck. They print and mail those ballots out as they come in.
All right, so you guys get the applications for the, somebody requests a mail-in ballot.
Yes.
And then you just give it to this firm, and then they just mail out the ballot.
Correct.
To them.
Correct.
And that's how you did it last year?
Correct.
And that's something that Hart couldn't, or any of the other ones that couldn't be in the proposal, that let them, do they not offer that service?
Hart, typically, the voting equipment vendors, they don't, they're not mailhouses. Like, Runbeck specializes in the printing and distribution of vote-by-mail ballots, and they do it across multiple different voting systems. Like, we had a different voting system in 2020. They still provided us the same service of printing and mailing out these ballots. So this is a service that Runbeck specializes in. Hart provides the tabulation.
Are they using, like, Hart's printers and stuff to print them, or are they using their own?
They have their own printers, but Hart and Runbeck are in communication with each other and us to confirm that the specifications of what Runbeck prints matches the specifications of what we print on the Hart equipment.
Member Chavez.
Thank you. I just want to thank our Clerk's Office for having the foresight to see that we are going to see an increase in this volume. As someone who lived in Seattle for 14 years, and I did all vote-by-mail, because that's all we had, I think it really encourages voters to vote. It makes it so easy. There's no standing in line. And so I hope that our voters will continue to use vote-by-mail. I hope that we see these numbers increase year over year over year. And I want to thank you for your foresight and anticipation of this year's numbers increasing substantially. So thank you.
Thank you.
All right, yep, Member Zay.
Yeah, and that's great, but we were kind of led to believe that's why we had to spend $7 or $8 million on equipment, because this was going to cover that. I mean, we all know that vote-by-mail is going up, so now we bought all that equipment just to handle early voting, right, and at the polling places. So one out of the three areas where we would be printing our own ballots and doing this is gone now. You're saying, so who double-checks this? Who makes sure that these numbers are, I mean, I assume you email the list, right? And you do that to them?
I don't.
I mean, you have to send them, somehow you have to send them a list, right? I mean, it's electronically sent?
To Runbeck?
Yeah.
Yes, I mean, there's a process in place. Again, it's the same process that was used in 2020 to provide them the data uploads to, you know, print and distribute the ballots. And again, I apologize if there was any misunderstanding about the purchase of the voting system, because we needed new in precinct and early voting equipment regardless. voting system, because we needed new in precinct and early voting equipment regardless. Our previous system was no longer being supported by the vendor. We have to have in-person voting on Election Day and early voting. You know, we believe the Hart system was the best option for those services. And the Hart ballot and tabulation is absolutely compatible with the vote by mail vendor that we have in place. So we feel we have a very solid solution in place for the 2022 election.
All right, Member Rutledge.
Thank you, Chair. I'm sorry, I'm a little frustrated by the line of questioning going on here. It sounds like a lot of it is based on the big lie. We had no issues of voter fraud in our county. We did the same thing in 2020 with the mail-in ballots that you're describing. The resolution calls for not to exceed, so we don't know what that volume is, but we expect it to get more. For those that are worried that we just bought new election equipment, we have in the past purchased used election equipment from other counties. So if we find that more people are doing mail-in voting, we certainly would have the option of selling off excess voting equipment. So I'm just frustrated by the big lie. It's that, a big lie. There is no problem with election security, and I don't have any problem with this issue, and I am for sure voting in favor of this resolution.
All right, do we have any other comments or questions for this item? All right, if not, Adam, I'll let you put your secretary hat back on before we keep moving here. Can you confirm if we had a request for leave or not?
I did not hear one.
Let's just do it again, just to be careful. Leave is granted. Thank you, Member Kuduski. Then next up's Animal Services, Member Kuduski.
I move on 2022-8, Recommendation for the Approval of a Renewal of the Veterinary Pharmaceuticals and Medical Supply Contract Purchase Order to Zodas U.S. LLC.
All right, there's been a motion and a second. Mr. Deputy Clerk, please call the roll.
Sir, I need just a second to get back to the right place.
Oh, absolutely, okay.
Kuduski.
Aye.
LaPlante, Ozog, Pachowski, Renahan, Rutledge.
Aye.
Schorzy, Salmon, Tornatori.
Aye.
Zay.
Aye.
Chaplin, Chavez, Covert.
Aye.
Desart, DeCiani, Eckhoff, Garcia, and Hart.
All right, motion passes. Thank you, Member Kuduski. Next up is Development, Member Sam Tornatori, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Move approval of DCO 2-22, Ordinance C 2185, Approval of a Conditional Use for a Self-Storage Facility.
Motion and a second. Mr. Deputy Clerk, please call the roll.
Tornatori.
Aye.
Zay.
Aye.
Chaplin, Chavez.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart, DeCiani, Eckhoff, Garcia.
Aye.
Hart, Kuduski.
Aye.
LaPlante, Ozog, Pachowski.
Aye.
Renahan, Rutledge.
Aye.
Schorzy.
Aye.
And Salmon.
Aye.
All right, thank you, Member Tornatori.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Move Approval of DCO 3-22, Ordinance C 2187, Approval of a Variation to Allow a Six One Hundred Percent Closed Privacy Fence Within a Ten-Foot Corner Side Yard Setback.
Leave is granted. Thank you, Member Tornatori. Next up is Environmental, with an update from Member Rutledge, please.
Thank you, Chair, Salmon. And I was glad that we did take a few minutes this morning to think about the victims of the tornado that ravaged the four states. Kind of want to point out, for those that don't think climate change is an issue, this was unprecedented in a myriad of ways. 217 miles that this tornado went across at least four states in late December, way north of what we typically would see any powerful tornadoes at that time of the year. So my heart goes out to all of those people. And in that vein, I will commend the citizens and our county for advocating for things that we can do to help our environment. And I'm actually very proud to announce this morning that we have received a proposal for a $25,000 donation that will go toward a solar array here on our campus that will look very much like the one that the Forest Preserve did at Willowbrook Wildlife Center. And staff is looking into that as we speak, so I'm thrilled to bring that forward this morning. Good afternoon.
Very exciting. Thank you, Member Rutledge. Next up, Health and Human Services, Member Renahan, please.
All right, thank you, Chair, Salmon. I move Approval of HHSR 525-21, Resolution, it's an IGA with case suburban bus and community services prepared transit $825,000.
There's been a motion and a second. Mr. Deputy Clerk, please call the roll.
Renahan.
Aye.
Rutledge.
Aye.
Schorzy.
Aye.
Salmon.
Aye.
Tornatori.
Aye.
Zay.
Aye.
Chaplin, Chavez.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart, DeCiani, Eckhoff, Garcia, Hart, Kuduski, Plant, Ozog, and Pachowski.
All right, motion passes. Member Renahan?
Thank you. I move Approval of HHSR 0002-22, Resolution, this is Approval for a Fourth Modification to a CDVG Agreement with Little City Foundation, Renovation of Two Hanover Park Asilas, Project Number CD 20-03, Reducing Scope of Work.
Leave is granted, please.
Thank you. I'm going to move to combine items 13, C, D, E, and F. These are all CSBG contracts with nonprofit partners dated January 1st, 2022 through December 31st, 2022.
There's been a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, combined.
Thank you. I move Approval of HHSP 3-22, This is Contract with 360 Youth Services to Provide Case Management, Job Coaching, Preparedness, Transportation, GED Coaching to Homeless Youth in DuPage County. CSBG, Not to Exceed $66,791. HHSP 4-22, Contract with Catholic Charities Hope House to Assist 140 Homeless Residents in Temporary Housing, Case Management by Financial Assistance, and Supporting a Back-to-School Fair, Not to Exceed $60,000. HHSP 5-22, Contract with Home DuPage to Provide Financial Counseling Workshops to Low-Income Residents in DuPage County, Not to Exceed $43,885. And HHSP 6-22, Contract with Outreach Community Services to Provide Case Management Counseling, Job Skill Training Experience, Work Readiness Training, and GED Assistance, in a Total Amount of $85,600.
Anybody want to ask for leave? All right, leave is granted. Thank you, Member Renahan. Just do it in order, there's no problem.
All right, thank you. I move Approval of HHSP 7-22, Contract Purchase Order to Northwestern Medicine Regional Group, Medical Group for Services of Angelo Miele M.D., Medical Director of DuPage Care Center, December 16th, 2021 through November 30th, 2022, Not to Exceed $34,500.
Leave is granted.
I move Approval of HHSP 19-22, Contract Purchase Order to Family Shelter Services, Inc. to Provide Advocacy Services to Victims of Domestic Violence, December 1, 2021 through November 30, 2022, for Community Services, Not to Exceed $85,000.
Leave is granted.
Thank you. I move Approval of, this is an Authorization for Overnight Travel for the Community Services Administrator to Attend and Teach a Training at Illinois Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity, January 11, 2022 through January 13, 2022, $6717.
Leave is granted.
And finally, I move Approval of, this is also of Overnight Travel for the Weatherization Assessor to Do a Field Examination in Champaign, Illinois, December 19th through December 20th, 2021, $428.66.
Leave is granted. Thank you, Member Renahan. Next up, JPS, Member Renahan.
All right, thank you, Madam Chairwoman. I move Approval of JPS R 6-22, Resolution, this is Between the Sheriff of DuPage County and Still Brook Center for Inmate Medical Services, December 14, 2021 through November 30th, 2022.
There's been a motion and a second. Mr. Deputy Clerk, please call the roll.
Renahan.
Aye.
Rutledge.
Aye.
Schorzy.
Aye.
Salmon.
Aye.
Tornatori.
Aye.
Zay.
Aye.
Chaplin, Chavez.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
DeCiani, Eckhoff.
Aye.
Garcia.
Aye.
Hart, Kuduski, Plant, Ozog, and Pachowski.
Motion carries.
All right, thank you. I move Approval of JPSP 17-22, Approval of a Contract Purchase Order to Ray O'Heron for New Officer and Employee Uniforms for the Sheriff, December 30th, 2021 through December 29th, 2022, in a Total Amount of $225,000.
Leave is granted.
All right, thank you. And finally, I move Approval of JPSP 18-22, Approval of a Contract Purchase Order to Lenco Industries for the Purchase of an Armored Vehicle for the Sheriff's Office and Merritt for a Contact Total Not to Exceed $315,857.
Voice votes always, or I'm sorry, do you mean a roll call? Yeah, always in order. Member, Mr. Deputy Clerk, please call the roll.
Aye.
Rutledge.
Aye.
Schorzy.
Aye.
Salmon.
Aye.
Tornatori.
Aye.
Zay.
Aye.
Chaplin, Chavez.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
DeCiani, Eckhoff, Garcia.
Aye.
Hart, Kuduski, Plant, Ozog, and Pachowski.
Motion carries. Thank you, Member Renahan. Next up is Legislative Update, Member Desart.
Just want to let everybody know by way of an update that we are going to have Bill Vani here for sure from our national, he's our federal lobbyist. He will be here at 1:30, giving us an overview of the Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act, and also the Build Back Better Act. So that's at 1:30 today. Bill Vani will be with us. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Member Desart. Next up is Public Works. Member Ozog gets out, so Member Hart, can you please read?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move on PWR 009-22, Second Amendment to the Fifth Renewal to the Nordic Park Water Tower Lease Agreement with T-Mobile.
There's been a motion and a second. Mr. Deputy Clerk, please call the roll.
Hart.
Aye.
Kuduski.
Aye.
LaPlante, Ozog, Pachowski.
Aye.
Renahan.
Aye.
Rutledge.
Aye.
Schorzy.
Aye.
Salmon.
Aye.
Tornatori.
Aye.
Zay.
Aye.
Chaplin, Chavez.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
DeCiani, Eckhoff.
Aye.
Garcia.
Aye.
Hart, Kuduski.
Aye.
Plant, Ozog, Pachowski.
Aye.
Renahan.
Aye.
Rutledge.
Aye.
Schorzy.
Aye.
Salmon.
Aye.
Tornatori.
Aye.
Zay.
Aye.
Chaplin, Chavez.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
DeCiani, Eckhoff.
Aye.
Garcia.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Kuduski.
Aye.
LaPlante, Ozog, and Pachowski.
Motion carries. Member Hart?
Thank you. I move on SMR 522, Recommendation for Approval of a Contract Issued to White Construction Services, Inc. to Provide Professional Construction Manager as Advisor of Services Related to the Replacement of the JLB HVAC System.
Leave is granted.
Thank you. I move on FMP 0020-22, Recommendation for the Approval of a Contract Issued to Conference Technologies, Inc. for Phase Two of the Courtroom Technology Upgrades.
Leave is granted.
Thank you. I move on FMP 0021-22, Recommendation for the Approval of a Contract to Home Depot, USA, Inc. for Miscellaneous Maintenance, Repair, and Operation Parts and Supplies as Needed.
Leave is granted.
Thank you. And then lastly, I move on PWCO 002-22, Amendment to Resolution PWCO 0031A-20, Issued to Polydine for Additional Polymer for the Woodridge Green Valley and Knollwood Facilities for Public Works.
Leave is granted. Thank you, Member Hart.
Thank you.
Next up is Stormwater, Member Zay.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Move on SMR 522, Recommendation for Approval in our Governmental Agreement between the County of DuPage and the Forest Preserve District for Spring Brook Number One Creek and Wetland Restoration.
There's been a motion and a second. Mr. Deputy Clerk, please call the roll.
Zay.
Aye.
Chaplin, Chavez.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart, DeCiani, Eckhoff.
Aye.
Garcia.
Aye.
Hart, Kuduski.
Aye.
LaPlante, Ozog, Pachowski.
Aye.
Renahan.
Aye.
Rutledge.
Aye.
Schorzy.
Aye.
Salmon.
Aye.
And Tornatori.
Motion carries. Member Zay?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Move on SMP 1422, Enter an Agreement between the County of DuPage and Engineering Resources for Professional Engineering Services from December 14th, 2021 through November 30th, 2023, in the Amount $200,000.
Leave is granted.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
for Professional Engineering Services from December 14, 2021 through November 30, 2023, Not to Exceed $200,000.
Leave is granted.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move on SMP 16-22, Agreement between DuPage County and Haynes Associates for Professional Engineering Services for Steam Bank Stabilization from December 14, 2021, November 30, 2022, Not to Exceed $85,000.
Leave is granted. Thank you, Members A.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Next up is Technology. Member Hart, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move on TEP 0023-22, Recommendation for the Approval of a Contract Purchase Order to Acela Inc. for Managed Application Services for the Building and Zoning, Transportation, Stormwater, and Public Works Departments.
There's been a motion and a second. Mr. Deputy Clerk, please call the roll.
Hart.
Aye.
Kuduski.
Aye.
LaPlante, Ozog, Pachowski.
Aye.
Renahan.
Aye.
Rutledge.
Aye.
Schworzy.
Aye.
Salmon.
Aye.
Tornatori.
Aye.
Zay.
Aye.
Chaplin, Chavez.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
Diciani, Eckoff.
Aye.
And Garcia.
Aye.
Motion carries. Member Hart?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move on TEP 0024-22, Recommendation for the Approval of a Contract Purchase Order to CA Technologies Doing Business as Broadcom Inc. to Provide E-Server Support Diagnostic Resolve Software Licensing for IT.
Leave is granted. Thank you, Member Hart. Next up, Transportation, Member Pachowski.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair. I would move to discharge a Transportation Committee for Agenda Items A through E.
There's been a motion to combine items A through...
No, no, motion to discharge the committee. We didn't meet last night.
Oh, I'm sorry.
And that's on Agenda Items A through E.
A through E, discharged, seconded. Do you need a roll call for that? Just all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, go ahead.
Thank you very much. As far as committee update, today we will vote on the Department of Transportation's Long Range Transportation Plan. Everybody has an executive summary. It's online. We got to thank Chris Snyder and the guy who puts in a ton of time, John Loper, our chief planner, and our senior planner, Sidney Kenyon, for all of the work they put in, because they were at seminars, they were online, and there was a lot of stakeholders involved. And this is looking at the transportation for the next 20 years, our goals, our objectives, and our priorities. So, we will have $1.06 billion to make investments in maintenance, operations, and capital projects. And again, DuPage County wants to be in good repair and make sure that the investments we have made are bringing our system safe and usable. So, I'm very happy to move on this, and I hope everybody else has a chance to read that as well. So, that being said, I would move to approve DTR 001-22, which is the adoption of the Long Range Transportation Plan.
There's been a motion and a second. Mr. Deputy Clerk, please call the roll.
Pachowski.
Aye.
Renahan.
Aye.
Rutledge.
Aye.
Schworzy.
Aye.
Salmon.
Aye.
Tornatori.
Aye.
Zay.
Aye.
Chaplin, Chavez.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
Diciani, Eckoff.
Aye.
Garcia.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Kuduski.
Aye.
LaPlante, and Ozog.
Yes, we do. No one else leave, though.
All right.
Motion carries.
I will go fast. I would move to approve DTR 0400821, an Amendment to a Resolution issued to SKC Construction Inc. for the 2021 Maintenance Prevention Crack Ceiling Program to Increase the Funding in the Amount of $388.80 for Final Cost of $22,488.80.
Leave is granted.
Move to approve DTP 0001-22, Recommendation for Approval of Contract to Lakeside International LLC to Furnish and Deliver Navistar International Repair and Replacement Parts as Needed for a Contract Not to Exceed $110,000.
Leave is granted.
Move to approve DTP 002-22, Recommendation for Approval of Contract to Moro Truck Equipment to Furnish and Deliver One Asphalt Hotbox Reclaimer Unit for the Division of Transportation for a Contract Not to Exceed $33,819.
Leave is granted.
And lastly, motion to approve 2022-1, Approval of Contract to Hazchem Environmental Inc. to Provide Hazardous Material Testing, Disposal, and Emergency Service as Needed with Department of Transportation $20,000, Stormwater $9,000 for a Contract Not to Exceed $29,000.
Leave is granted. Thank you, Member Pachowski.
Thank you.
All right, that completes our committee work. Next up is Discussion. This is PA 99-0646, Pension Obligation Projections Required by Local Government Wage Increase Transparency Act. Does anyone wish to be recognized? All right, seeing none. Next up is Old Business. Anyone have any old business? Is he...Member Schworzy, then Desart, and then Tornatori.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Couple things. Earlier today, we approved the very first contract for the Ask Me DuPage Care Center workers, and it was quite an accomplishment. I want to thank our negotiating team, Janelle Chadwick, who's the executive director over there. A special shout-out to our ad hoc committee and the committee chair, Don Pachowski, for working tirelessly on this. And I especially want to thank our Ask Me Council 31 employees who have been very patient. They've continued to work. They've continued to do a wonderful job taking care of our seniors and those most needy over there. So, I'm very happy that we got that done, and so a big congratulations and a thank you. And then, my sincere apologies to you with regards to jumping the gun on motioning on agenda items before their complete reading. I've been known around the firehouse for at least a decade for being hard of hearing, and I did not hear you, so no disrespect, man.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
I'm quick on the trigger.
Next up, I believe we have Member Desart, and then Member Tornatori.
Thank you. I just want to give kudos to our stormwater team, and specifically to Sarah Hahn. I attended the Rotary Club of Naperville luncheon last month, or earlier this month, and we had water quality supervisor engineer Mary Beth Falsy and senior project engineer Jamie Locke speak to the JCs, and they were, mic drop, fantastic. They were so knowledgeable, and I just sat there. My heart was filled watching these women use their STEM backgrounds for successful careers in our stormwater department. And also, to point out that Jamie and Mary Beth have been with stormwater since they graduated from college. So, not only do we get great people for our stormwater department, but we keep them, and that's something to be proud of. Thank you.
Next up is Member Tornatori.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I won't be long, because I know you've got another meeting, but I feel compelled to comment. I know we're all...we all have different ideas, and we're from some different political parties. And I know we're entering the silly season, otherwise known as an election year, but we're here to govern. And, you know, when there's legitimate questions that are being asked by board members, I think if that seems to be disappointing to some board members, or we start using dog whistle terms like the big lie, that's out of bounds. I expect that from members of the public who aren't elected, who don't have to work together like we do. Like a comment that was made earlier this morning about a member of the public being seen drinking. What's the next thing? I'm going to be seen with a woman, not my wife, who happens to be my daughter? Is that what we're coming to? If the general public wants to talk that way, that's fine, but I think we got to keep it a little more civil among ourselves, because if we're going to start doing that, then debate as we know it on this board is over, and everything will become political, everything will become a free-for-all, and we'll stop governing until the next election. That's not how I want to spend the next year, and I hope it's not the way other people do either. So, thank you.
Thank you, Member Tornatori. Member Pachowski?
I just quickly. I thought when we had public comment today, we had one anonymous public comment, and we had a public comment that didn't give the first person's first name and last name. And I would think as a policy, it should be, if you don't have the ability to put your name and where you're from on a public comment, then it shouldn't be read. Thank you.
If...if Member Pachowski, or Mr. McCarthy, so sorry, if you could sort of explain what we can require and what we can't require for public comment.
So, typically speaking, you can require a name. There's recently been legislation passed that you can't do a background check on someone who's speaking at a public comment, so it's hard to determine if it's someone's name, or if they want to use a nickname or other cognomen. The rules you're limited to with regards to public comment have to take as a watchword the ability to orderly...sorry, administer public comment in an orderly fashion, and a fashion allows people to have their public comments heard. So, you can't require...you are required in theory to accept a nickname. I don't know that you are required to accept an anonymous one, but I know there's one at least that says was Miss D. I don't know. Perhaps that's what people know the individual by. I don't know that we can require a legal name, just like you can't require a...
I just see that going the wrong direction, because then you're going to have a truth and justice, the American way, and an anonymous. In my opinion, absolutely, if you can't even give me some name, you shouldn't be read, and that's my...
And I'm happy to look into that for you and do some digging.
Great, thank you. Members A.
Yes, thank you. Just to follow up on that, that just is concerning. As you said, what's going to be next? I mean, there should be some kind of, you know, it should have to do with, pertain somehow to county business or something that's going on. It shouldn't